August 16th, council meeting. We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. If you guys can go ahead and be seated. Madam Clerk, if I could please have a call for the meeting to come to order?
Mayor Bettencourt?
Here.
Mayor Protem Malakon?
Here.
Councilmembers Bishop?
Here.
Loa?
Here.
Olsen?
Here.
And Commissioners Fagassain?
Here.
And Bet?
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. And if I could please have everyone stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence? That would be greatly appreciated. Please stand, put your right hand over your heart, face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. You can go ahead and be seated. Okay, we're on item number four, waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances? Oh wait, we have a change. Mr. Attorney?
The Brown Act allows for late additions to an agenda. There are very specific circumstances. They are, simply put, the need arose after your agenda was posted, and you need to take immediate action. Now, such a thing requires a four of the five members' approval, an affirmative four votes. I would recommend that the council find that we found out basically yesterday, Tuesday, so the agenda had been posted, that the results of a mediation in one of our cases came through and requires council direction, reaction this week. So, the need to take immediate action is certainly satisfied. What I would ask you to do is consider by the four-fifths or better vote to add a new 14.1, DeAngelo versus City of Palmdale, case number A301580. Again, it's an existing case. We need direction regarding the disposition of it. So with that...
Okay, so we're gonna have, we're gonna make that 14.1? And what will we do with...
It's gonna be 14.2.
Well, mechanically, if we make this 14.1, you'd renumber the other 14, too. That way, that can happen without the pressure of this being afterwards.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'd be happy to move that we find as a council that a matter arose subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires urgent action. And we will, under those premises, add 14.1 to our agenda, DeAngelo case number A301580.
Second.
Okay, go ahead and do a roll call.
If we can just get a voice vote on that?
Sure.
All together?
All in favor? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, seeing who opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so now we're on item number four, waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances. Second. You want us to do a voice vote?
Oh.
We have a motion, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing them, we will move on to number five, public comments. This is the time for the public to participate on items listed on the consent calendar. So, if we have any speaker cards, could you call up the first? I'm sorry? Consent calendar, appointments, and closed session.
Thank you. Mr. Eugene Hernandez for item 7.2, 7.5, and 14.1.
Since we're gonna actually poll an item, we don't want the public speaking about it, right? So I should announce that one's being polled? Okay, okay. Come on, Eugene.
Yes, regarding 7.2, the legal agreement, I think that last meeting, your attorney, Curly, made an inappropriate remark regarding the expenditure of a snack bar that's gonna cost us half a million dollars. He interjected his own personal opinion of his building where he made, where he said it cost him, a new bathroom, $250,000. So he interjected himself into the discussion that the city has regarding the expenditure of that money. And I think that did not, is out of the jurisdiction of his legal authority. And I think you should get a new, a new public lawyer firm than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Caesar Ayala? Sorry. It trails off in the pencil.
No, it's already started. Your time is burning.
10 minutes total. And I'm here to speak on behalf of Patrick Brophy. I've worked with him for several years. I've informally spoken to a lot of staff members, educational partners. And everybody is super excited at the prospect of having him sit on our board and have a former teacher and staunch supporter of our students, robotics team, several other clubs, and friend of the academy and some of its long-term workers there. So, just wanted to say, hey, we like him. Just, please appoint him, please. All right.
Thank you. We appreciate your input. Next speaker?
Daniel?
This evening, you're gonna consider candidates for an open position on our school's board of directors. And I would like to speak in favor of the appointment of Patrick Brophy. Mr. Brophy was one of the original founding teachers on staff when the school opened. He helped found our school's highly successful robotics team and continues to serve as a mentor to that robotics team. We're a small school. When we opened, we relied extensively on teachers to serve in leadership roles. We used to call these teams fact committees or fact teams. And these committees would handle responsibilities you might expect an administrator to handle at a smaller or at a regular school setting. These teams have since become obsolete over the last couple of years as our school and administrative staff has grown. But all this is to say that across his nine years of teaching at TPAA, Mr. Brophy became well acquainted with the operation of charter schools and the unique nature of operations at the Palmdale Aerospace Academy. This experience, combined with his enduring love for our school community, as evidenced by his ongoing volunteer commitments, make Mr. Brophy exceptionally qualified for appointment to our board of directors. It is my sincere hope that this council considers Mr. Brophy's unique and invaluable experience and knowledge of our school and vote in favor of his appointment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Michael Ross.
Jason and I, we're gonna dance. Hi, I'm Michael Ross. I just really wanted, real quick, just, I have a, on item 7.5 and 7.6, this is for the, I guess it's called the Dream Village Grants that we're considering. My understanding is we're timing out doing the village over here by the youth build place. I would question that. I'm not sure that's the greatest place for us to do something like that, especially being close to downtown, down by, you know, a part of the city that we want to put our best foot forward in. So, I would, I would hope that you guys would actually really think twice about where you're gonna put this. And if we could get any more information on this, that would be great. We just heard about it not too long ago. We're totally into helping everybody out, you know, as part of Salvation Army, homeless stuff. But I think that that's not the right location. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next speaker?
No further speakers.
Okay. Oh, oh wait, there's more.
Regarding 7.2, again, I'm concerned about legal bills and attorney fees. It just seems like it's eating away at the city budget like crazy, like I've never seen it before. So, I just wanted to bring that up again, because it's, you guys always say, okay, this is the last time we're paying attorneys. But then, here we go again, $240,000. The other thing on 7.5 and 7.6, the homeless village. I don't know if this is for, I really wish the city would have had a meeting to discuss this, a housing meeting, so the public could have had input on it, and they could have presented a presentation to us. And so I think that's, it's like the city is forgetting about the public and all this stuff. My main concern is, we're just using city funds. There's no doubt in my mind that the mayor could call Supervisor Barker and get a matching grant. Why are we just using city funds? Why don't we leverage our city money to get more money in? Right? You don't think Barker wouldn't give us $400,000 for this? Loa, come on. There's so much money. We're already paying sales tax, mayor. We're already paying sales tax to the homeless program. So why can't we get that money back? And then use some of this money for other things, like feeding people with Ruth? Or for small business grants? I just think it's, it's a lazy approach for the city not to go out and first try to get grants. Just like with Yellin Park. We didn't even try to get a grant for that phase. We used all city funding. Measure AV. It's just wrong. It's laziness.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comments on consent items. Council, how about you? Any comments from the council?
I have a comment on 7.5 and 7.6. The way I read that, it's, it's a grant agreement that is being provided to the city.
Yeah, let's just pull it forward.
We're gonna call 7.5 and 7.6?
Right, 7.5, 7.6.
What else?
Those were my two. Does anybody need 7.2?
No. Austin?
Nope, I'm good with those still.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve...
Motion, motion approved that.
Wait, a motion to approve the what?
Consent calendar.
Balance of consent calendar minus 7.5 and 7.6.
Mayor, can we do Housing Authority first? And we'll use the system for voting on those.
Okay. We can do that. Well, you know what? We can just send the system through with us. Don't be afraid. Okay.
Okay, so let's, let's... Maybe you want to retract that motion, and then we'll do housing consent calendar first.
Okay, so I'll retract that motion, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass the consent calendar on the Housing Authority.
Second.
All in favor?
You can use the system?
Oh, we can, okay. See, I got used to the other way. All right.
Start voting.
Okay, motion passes with seven yeses and no nos. Okay, well, thank you for coming up, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Do you want to do a second one?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 7.5 and 7.6.
Second?
We have a motion and a second? Are we gonna use the computer or voice vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll call Fizzo.
You made the second, I'll second it.
Oh, I did, but it's not the right machine.
Start voting.
I can't.
Yeah, mine doesn't have it either.
You can't vote? Okay.
Oh, there we go. Five yeses, no nos, so the motion passes. All right, so we're good...
Can I make a suggestion that we, I know we typically don't move from the consent calendar to appointments, but may I suggest that we table 7.5 and 7.6 and just move to the appointment, since we've got several people here?
I would rather not, because I have a lot to say about the appointments.
Oh, okay.
Got it. Thank you. Sorry. So, go ahead, and I guess we have staff. Who's gonna present 7.5? I'm assuming the same person will do 7.5 and 7.6? Right, both of you? Both of them, for you?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Heather Nichols, Senior Housing Coordinator. The item before you for consideration is an agreement with Advancing Communities Together for 781,820 for the development of 20 units of crisis interim housing for a 10-year term to be located at Axe 9th Street East property. This project will be funded by the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, CSLRF funds, under the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Advancing Communities Together proposes to develop and operate a 20-unit crisis interim housing program called Palmdale's Dream Village. The crisis interim housing will provide 20 unhoused adult individuals with safe and supportive housing conditions, community engagement teams, wraparound services, housing navigation services, case management, family reunification, health and wellness services, and various workforce development programs. Interim housing is a component of the Homes Plan that was presented in June. ACT proposes to use the CSLRF funding for facility improvements to have the site prepped and electrical, water, and sewer lines installed to accommodate pallet unit structures. These improvements include repairing the parking lot and reusing materials, grading the lot to provide a leveled foundation and laying concrete, architectural and engineering support to design the sewer and utilities plan, including electrical and water to each pallet unit. ACT proposes to purchase one, two-stall hygiene units with separate toilet, sink, and individual shower units, one ADA accessible unit with two toilets, sink, and one shower hygiene unit. In addition, ACT will purchase one community activity room for meals and workshops, one laundry unit with four washer dryer stackable sets, one housing office for case management, one-on-one meetings, 28-by-8 housing units, and training for ACT facility crews on construction, deconstruction, and maintenance of all units. Rossi and Olivia Sherry are here to answer any questions, and staff is also available for questions.
Thank you.
Question? What's the source of the funding for this? Is it a grant, or is it coming out of...
Coming out of ARPA.
What's that?
ARPA.
ARPA funds, right? That's federal funds?
Yes.
So nothing's coming from the city budget?
No, it's going from ARPA.
Okay, where is this project located? It's 9th, it's right off of 9th and Avenue Q?
Yes.
Okay.
Will the Avenue Q improvement have any, any conflicts with what's going on at the... Because it's right there. When we do Avenue Q, is that gonna affect this program? I guess is my question I'm trying to spit out.
We're not aware of any conflicts with that, with that, those improvements.
Okay.
Because this is about, at least 500 feet in.
Okay.
So it's not at the corner.
Okay. And I just want to address Mr. Ross's concerns. I have similar concerns, because, you know, what I do. But the limited amount of people that will be there, I don't believe will impact that area. It will be watched very closely, of course. It's gonna be 20 homes, right?
Yes.
And the homes cannot contain more than two people. Is that correct?
That's my understanding correct.
So no more than 40 at one time would be in that area?
That would be the maximum, but usually it's individuals. And we can bring up Rossi and Olivia. I think they may be able to answer these questions.
Okay, thank you.
To the best of my knowledge, we don't have any tiny homes in Palmdale right now, do we?
No.
So this would be the first?
Good evening, how are you doing?
Hello.
Hey.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate the time and consideration of our proposal. First of all, we are, ACT is definitely known as AV Youth Build in more general terms, but we do a lot more than that. We've developed three or four properties in the city of Palmdale. So we're also a developer, a general contract and work development organization, right? And we also run a TA housing program for youth on 5th Street East. We have some experience in developing properties, running housing programs, and workforce development in these areas, right? And also, our properties, we own the lots you're building on. And so we're leveraging funding by providing those lots on behalf of the city as in-kind donation to the city as a partnership in order to serve the unhoused people in the community of Palmdale. This idea came about from our housing, our homeless outreach plan we did about six months ago. We interviewed 100 and something unhoused people in the city of Palmdale. Went to every city, every encampment, every, every street corner. And we asked them, what can we do, what can the city do for you? And the question was, provide us with true housing program that's gonna serve us, help us get job skills, help us get ourselves back together, unite with our family. So therefore, we wrote this up, and it's how it came about. So this is not something that we came and said, hey, we wanna spend some city money and do this project. We thought it'd be a great idea to serve the unhoused people in our community in lieu of, in alignment with the city's homeless plan, right? We're not going outside of your homeless plan, what you wanted to do. So, each of these homes are from palace shelter. They're 8-by-8, 64 square feet units, right? So there'll be 20 units. And portable shower's always been a problem with the winter shelter, which is right there in the same, we housed a winter shelter for the last three years before COVID in the same, in the same location. So we've been doing some homeless work in that area already, in the previous, in the past. We're just adding addition to. We feel like if we bring the winter shelter in, we get folks stabilized, engage them with really good case management program services, and then we can find out who's stable and move them right into an interim housing program right next to that facility. And they're still getting the same kind of care. We're gonna feed them, provide them with meals, let them learn trade while they're there. They're gonna be on our maintenance team, our construction program, right? At the same time, we wanna make sure that they're engaged with all of our CES programs, like Oasis, and the county is also a part of this process. So, this is not a standalone with the city of Palmdale. This is ACT, a nonprofit, which those funds are intended to serve for COVID nonprofits, cities and counties. And so we feel like we met the obligation and eligibility requirements needed there. So, any...
So I guess some concerns the public has shared with me is, there was at one time another shelter in our city north of us, and it would close at a certain time, and then they would just kind of push people out, and they couldn't get back in until a certain time.
Right.
This housing, you're kind of assigned, correct me if I'm wrong, assigned a little housing unit, and that'll be your unit, and they're, they're not gonna push you out between certain hours of the day to where you just wander the streets.
Correct. It's, so this is their home, and for at least a 90-day reassessment period. So every 90 days, we reassess them. And so for 90 days, we have security guards on campus. It'll be fenced-in program, right? 24-hour security there on campus, right? So they'll be living there, and they'll have, they'll eat their meals there, they do community workshops there, they'll get training there. Everything will be self-sustained in that one location. And I said before, we already have a winter shelter program in our building already that exists.
Do you still have students with youth build there?
Right, we do, but...
How do you keep that separate?
Well, they're down, they're further up away in this fenced-in, right? And so we're not going to have any mingling of any, right? And also, we're doing the shelters 14 hours. So from 7:00 AM, so 7:00, they're leaving. We're going to a warming center, which is parked by our another partner. So they're not just pushed out. They're provided to go to a warming center where they can go there and still receive services throughout the day, so it does not impact our program services.
Have you guys reached out to the Sheriff's Department for a safety plan?
Yes, we have. We just spoke with... Yes, we have, we just spoke with uh, what is Joshua Bratton, Brandon?
Barton.
Yes, Barton, thank you so much, he came out, we met with him about it. Uh, we ran his advice about safety and security, making sure the neighborhood was still secure, any impact on that, he would tell us about that, and getting his deputies involved, what we're doing, so uh he, he liked the idea and stayed a part with us on that.
Okay, great. Any other questions, Austin, or?
No, just, just a comment, I, I know this program uh has been a success in other cities, so I'm looking forward to it, uh, hopefully working here and, and how it pans out.
Thank you.
Uh, my question might be more for staff, but um we talked about the funds are coming from ARPA and not the city budget, but are there any other entities contributing to this?
Yes.
The county?
For um, for the operations and the services, sorry. Mike, I apologize. Um, Sophia is Director of Neighborhood Services. Uh, for the operations, um, the Cherries are working with um the Homeless um Initiative CEO's Office and with LASSA for the funding for operations. And that uh is paying for the wraparound services, the case management, the mills. So we're helping to provide um the site for them to be in, but they're um uh, the winter shelter's the wraparound services. But they're also looking to them for, to um receive that funding.
Yes. We've been giving the county for a while, and I'm conversing about operational costs. So the county's contributing, uh, technical assistance, operational costs, as well as other experience and advice, so we can make sure we run a good program. And I guess before, we are donating our land, right, and, and contribute to the process also. We're leveraging our land for the process.
So, I just wanna start off with Olivia and Rossi, you guys are doing God's work. I think your, your work is commendable, it's transformative. I mean, you really are changing lives and giving people, empowering people to sustain their, themselves for, you know, the longevity of their lives and maintain families. So my questions are not, not to you, I think you guys are doing wonderful work. I wish we could support more community organizations like yours. My questions, I think, are directed to staff in terms of process, so unless they're, I, I just, I have questions about. So um, a couple, a couple things, so this is a grant award, right?
Correct.
Um, can you tell me about the process, about was there an RFP? Did we solicit grants? Was there a competitive process?
It was not a competitive process, and usually when it comes to affordable housing or interim housing, um, we are working with um those who come forward to um, to work with us, and we've been working with the Cherries for the last two, three years with the winter shelter and looking at solutions. So um, it is not always a competitive process when it comes to affordable housing. So it, but it is, um, but we are working with a network of several partners, and this is, they are, um, ACT is the one partner who has talked about um tiny homes, who's talked about um this solution, who has, actually has the capacity to come forward and to provide the services. We have spoke with many over the years.
I think the reason I'm asking is because there are concerns from the community about the location and a variety of other issues. Um, had we implemented and issued an RFP or an RFQ, um, and had competitive proposals, we might have had options for locations, we might have had options for um variety of services, we might have had, who knows? We might, we might not have received any applications, but at least we would have put it out there to other, other um, other providers of housing services that I, I know there's plenty of them that offer tiny home um offerings. Um, so I'm just, I'm concerned about us just awarding a grant unilaterally to a community organization. Not that I'm opposed to this organization, love them. I think the more grants we could give, the better. I'm all for supporting our community organizations. My concern is with process.
Staff has worked with um, looking for a site. We were working um in partnership with Lancaster, looking for a site. We talked about a tiny home project, and one of the things that we did is we went looking at property throughout um Palmdale. And what happens is, uh, most of the property does not have infrastructure, and the cost of infrastructure is very expensive to be able to set up the housing. Here we have um a organization that's offering their property that is already connected to the sewer, to the water, to electricity. So the costs are not as extensive as it would be going to a vacant lot or um a new, a new area that would, that does not have infrastructure.
Actually, um, I, from what I recall from both the agreement and both staff reports, um, the ACT proposes to use the funding for facility improvements to have the site um prepped, electrical, water, and sewer lines installed to accommodate the structures. There are a lot of various infrastructure improvements to the property that are being required, so.
They, they are connecting to their existing infrastructure. It is not new infrastructure being installed. And, and, and as they are adding to their infrastructure, it's not a complete um setup of infrastructure.
So.
Which is much, is more expensive.
There was also the suggestion that they're making an in-kind donation in terms of the property. They're not deeding over the property to the city, correct? We are giving them money to make the improvements. We're giving money to a private property owner to make improvements to their private property, and they're gonna keep those improvements. Uh, absent the modular units.
For, for ten years.
No, but we don't.
Ten years, correct. That, that is a term that's been, that is invested.
It says, it will maintain for as long as possible, i.e. ten years, assuming, and there's, there are other contingencies. So there is no guarantee of the ten years. Um, and the reason why I'm raising these issues is because I asked staff in advance to set forth a provision that guarantees the city use of the facility for a certain time. Because if we're going to be investing one point one million in a private property, we should guarantee our access to use. Um, I also, I didn't see anything in the agreement. We had a, I think you'll recall, we had a exhaustive conversation uh with Hope the Mission uh that was going, that has, has set a proposal in place to renovate the Knights Inn.
Correct.
And one of the requirements that we had of, of uh Hope the Mission in terms of our support of their proposal was guaranteeing that those that they are housing through the um, the screening process, what, we would have set aside number of units for the city of Palmdale's referrals. I don't see any of that in this, so that's a concern for me. I wanna make sure that we're serving the people that are already in need here locally, and we're not drawing folks uh to our community. Um, can you answer me this?
At this time, um, we do not have a shelter in Palmdale to serve those that um are in our, on our streets, in our fields. So. How do we ensure that those houses are used for Palmdale homeless and not being brought in from other areas? Because you know what they say, if you build it, they will come.
I, I'm, I'm sure the twenty units are gonna be packed very quickly. What's uh, real quick, what's the total cost of the project? Estimated?
Uh, about seven hundred and eighty thousand for the total project. Uh, like, like you said, this is, this is not a new development, most of it is infrastructure work to tie into what we already have. We already have a sewer line connected to the street.
You're not getting funding from, from anybody else to?
No, no, we're not, o- other than, no, we're not. Right, the county will give us money for operational costs, and this is why we didn't do it straight, said we're gonna do it for ten years, because we don't wanna, we can't, well, we can't, um, we can't do, we can't run operations with no, without LASSA. Right, LASSA funds interim housing, so from the county. And so if the county says, right, now we're negotiating an agreement with the county, and so the county says, hey, we can't do this, right? And then, then that'll be a problem, right? So we're trying to apply for grants and other, other opportunities to fund it for long-term. And so we want to make sure the city was aware of that, our agreement that we're still applying for grants and funding for it, but, but we wanna say, yeah, we're gonna do ten years straight, we have all the money we need. Right, for ten years. Because things, a lot can happen in a ten-year period.
Just, just to protect the, the residents of Palmdale. What happens if after one year, county says, no, we're not gonna do this, we're gonna do our own thing, and then you guys can't operate?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna capacity build for a year, right? Because we're gonna have a plan for that. We're talking about ten years out is a, is a long time. We're willing to do that, we do a five-year plan organizationally. We don't do ten, right? So we have a five-year plan to be able to fund for five years. Right, we, we went beyond five years of where you, where it gets kinda, okay, what are we gonna do? Right, and so that's what we wanna just make sure that we're clear about that.
And at the end of the day, at the end of the project, whether it's five years or ten years, those tiny houses belong to whom?
Belong to the city of Palmdale.
The, the modular units themselves, but so the total investment is one point seven, one point one seven two.
Right, can I clarify that? If you look at the budget, most of that funding is for the pallet homes, so not for the infrastructure work.
So.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for the units themselves.
The, in the budget for the, the shelter, it was a forty-five thousand dollar for the first increment for the first pallet units, and then a forty-five thousand, so it's a total of ninety thousand. That's for the winter shelter.
That's for the bathrooms, correct.
So that's what the city would own up in that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment. Um, but in terms of the modular homes, it's, so what is the, does somebody have the total amount of infrastructure investment as opposed to actual modular unit or hygiene unit?
Right, so I, I can tell you, there, the modular units themselves cost over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Just for the modular, just for the housing units and all, over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just for that work. And then the other work, like, like um Miss Sophie said, electrical to tie into electrical panels, that is very expensive right now. And it, and because of the, the funding source, you have to have market value wage or prevailing wage. So there's a high rate of mar- highway of labor being done because of that cost, because of what the, uh, the funding says, right? And so that increases the cost. So a big part of it is the pallet homes themselves is very expensive. But they have a, they have a seven, eighteen-year lifespan, and it can be taken up or taken down, right? That's the benefit of them, also there, because of our weather here in Antelope Valley, they're very wind, wind friendly, right? And so also, there's a lot of dignity in having your own key to where you are, right? And also the winter shelter, we um, we invested our own funds in getting that, that facility ready for the county and for the city to use as a winter shelter. We picked our own money in the sprinkler systems and all those things without any costs, without any money from the city at that time. So we made some investments prior to this program in, in, into unhoused uh people, and so um, you know, that's, that's where we are as organization. But we understand your, I do understand your concerns, it is a big chunk of money. We also feel like there is more, there's, there's a return on investment that we feel is valuable. And so that, that's where we come.
You don't have an argument with me. I wanna build as much housing as possible, I just, my issue is not the service, it's the process.
And part of the cost is um for the air conditioning, for the heat, for the beds, for the furniture, for what goes into those units to make them comfortable, because we do have extreme heat, we have extreme weather, and we do have, and part of that cost is by the air conditioners or the heaters to, uh, as components of that. So it's beyond just um the cost of the pallet itself, but there are the accessory costs.
I understand, and my concern is that we're investing almost one point two million dollars in a project that we don't own, and we don't have guaranteed use of those units for.
And this project is seven hundred thousand, because there's two items.
Well, combined, it's, it's the transition, right.
And one is this, is the.
But a combined one point two investment.
Mm-hmm.
And both agreements are almost virtually identical, because I read them both. Um, and we only get to keep the physical stuff. Anything else, the property owner keeps, but yet we don't have anything in here that guarantees the city access to, to refer or to house in those units. And that is my concern, and, and, and the second concern is there is no provision in these agreements that guarantees that during the screening process, that the people of Palmdale will have priority preference in terms of housing in these locations.
That's, that's the main thing I wanna hear from Rossi, to make sure, yeah? Make sure that people, it, it helps people within Palmdale.
Ideally, the folks in the winter shelter would be, and we already identified them through our outreach survey. Most of them live in Palmdale, right? Part of our intake process would be where they came from, right? So we can assure the city that we're gonna be looking at where they were living at before, a lot of them have prior connections in the city. And so we're, we already know a lot of them already through our, just from our outreach survey. So we can say, you know, we're going to make sure that a percentage of people in those homes are, are from the city of Palmdale.
Palmdale residents.
Would you be willing to set aside, like, make, I don't know, we can give a number, twenty-five percent, ten percent, I don't know, thirty percent, two? Just sort of like in the.
Well, we think it would be higher than that, we think it would be higher than that, we're not trying to.
That city manager gets a call, and, or we get a call, and we say, hey, there's an emergency, we've got somebody, and we call the city manager, and she, just, there's a guaranteed unit that the city can access.
Right, but the, the word guarantee kinda, well, I say guarantee, I said it because if we already have twenty really good candidates in the, in the facility, and then, and they all live in Palmdale, then we can't guarantee that space.
Twenty candidates, it could be full, and there could be a waiting list of five or ten people.
Correct.
No doubt that they're gonna fill up very quickly.
Correct, correct, and also because of operational cost, we still gotta follow some of the county, some of the county protocol, what that looks like. But we can, like, we can, we can negotiate with them also, say, hey, we wanna make sure we did, let's say seventeen, eighteen units have to be from the city of Palmdale. I think it should be a higher number, not twenty percent, it should be a higher number than that, right? And we think we can have it, because we're gonna be out there doing outreach with our outreach teams, ensuring that we're getting those who are already in Palmdale, and not those just kinda trying to come from another area.
I, I asked about the cost, because I know everything, the cost of everything's going up. The, the quote seems very modest. Do you guys think you'll be able to work within the, uh, money granted, or what if it goes over? Are you guys gonna have the, the funds to finish the project?
Well, we already, we, we, well, I did, we did, we already got quotes.
Okay.
From, from contractors in, 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 all city of Palmdale contractors, so we're working local here. There are nobody coming outside of Palmdale to do this work. They're all local, local businesses.
So, I, I'd like to see the project go, I've seen success in other communities with the tiny homes. I don't think there's any tiny homes in the entire Antelope Valley, if I'm correct. Is this gonna be the first tiny home project? And with it just being twenty units, it will give us an idea of if this is gonna work for our community or not.
Yeah, no, I'm fully supportive of this project, I don't know how to say it a million times over.
We understand.
Yes, I, I will vote in support of this. My concern is the process, and I wanna make sure that moving forward, that we don't kinda continue to stay in the habit of this kind of process. We've got to guarantee that we have open competition when we award grants. And that, I just, there are certain concerns that I have that have nothing to do with you. They're just a concern in terms of the process.
We, we don't control the process, but we, we do believe that we are uniquely qualified as an organization. We do believe that, we do believe that if we had to do a sole store justification, we would be able to do that, right? Only because of our experience. We already developed properties, we already a general contractor, we've already been a chold over for the city, we already run housing programs. We already, we, we, we do a lot of the things that, that we can justify being a sole store. We understand that you want a process.
Working with us for years, and we appreciate that. I think there's enough, I guess, for lack of a better term, skin in, skin in the game for the city, because we're gonna be owning the units, and those units can be moved, so.
We don't own them until they surrender them, to be clear.
Well, we're not, we're not gonna hold them captive.
No, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's only when you, when, when you guys cease operation, then you have to, you have to surrender this. This is, the ACT shall promptly surrender to city ownership and possession of the modular units. So it's not, we don't own them.
Right, but if they're getting used in the city of Palmdale, they're getting, you know, in, in the event that they don't get used, the city can at least use them and, and put them somewhere else. I have something to say, but before I do, I think Olivia does.
Yeah, I just wanna say. I just, I, no, no, what I wanna say is that for the last two years, LASSA and, and uh Superintendent's Office have been approaching us about winter, the winter shelters. So there has been a process in a sense that, what are we gonna do about it? Because we have been running a winter shelter program before. And so coming into, you know, all brains kinda coming together, we brought in the city and say, hey, this is what we think, you know? We need the shelter, LASSA's asking us, uh, District Five is asking us, you know, because we've done it before. Um, and so this is how we are kinda came across, because we know we align, our mission very much aligns with the city of Palmdale. So I kinda, that was kind of our process in a sense, right?
Thank you.
I don't want you to get in trouble. Thank you for that. Um, I understand everybody's concerns here. Mr. Ross, I understand your concern about being close to the downtown area, and like the mayor said, if you build it, they will come. But I'm in this area every single day, and they're coming. I see new people every day, I see people with their luggage. There's something happening that we have to stop, but in the meantime, we have people with a serious need. They need to get indoors. Right now, it's really hot, soon it's gonna be really cold. This is not the environment to be living outdoors. We gotta get people indoors. I understand the mayor pro tem's concern about process, but I think we need this now, and we need to get it right going forward, because this is just the start of our need. We're gonna have to figure something out real fast, so.
Yeah, no, agree, I'm, I'm happy, I'm going to move forward with this.
Yes, yes, you may.
Thank you, I think we need to um consider the chair and not just blurt out things over and over again. Um, I believe that this organization has been working with the city of Palmdale for a long time. They have a track record, they're transparent, they're accountable, and uh we ought to approve this forthwith, and I call for the question, so we can vote on it.
Okay, so Mr. Loa has made a motion, do I have a second? There is no question, we have to, somebody has to introduce the motion first.
I move to approve item seven point five.
And six? Because we, we pulled both seven five and seven six.
But we need, we need public comment on, or do we already got it?
We already received.
We combined them together.
All right, I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Go ahead and say it again.
You put your second in?
Yeah.
Okay.
She's inputting it.
The joy of modern technology.
Okay. Go ahead. Well, we're gonna call for the verbal vote.
Yes. Yes, go ahead and call for the verbal vote.
Can we call for the vote, please, verbally?
Oh, we'll call vote.
Mayor Ben Court?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Malicon?
Yes.
Council members.
Council members Bishop. Loa.
Yes.
And Olson. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so we, that was the only items we had pulled, with seven point five, seven point six, is that correct? Okay, so now we're gonna go ahead and move on to the appointments.
Wait a minute, so did we approve seven five and seven six?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have anybody, do we have the applicants here?
So, yeah, the, the reason I, I said I don't want to jump ahead, or I said I have something to say, is that I, I, I think sometimes we underestimate the importance of some of these appointments. Um, I did sit on the board for six years at the Aerospace Academy. It's a very important school to our community. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to see people with, um, engineering backgrounds, you know, wanting to sit on the board. Sometimes they're not the, the most fun that you can have, I'll tell you that. Um, but we need people that understand the business, understand the field. When, um, when I sat on that board, I was the only female on that board for a very long time, which was, you guys know my, my, women have to see women in STEM. Women, I, I used to work for Northrop Aircraft Engineering on B two bomber project. Putting people in place that understand the business is hugely important. So, um, I, I guess we have to vote on each name separately, or how, how do we do the vote on this?
Can we just nominate one?
Just nominate one, okay.
I think to Council Member Bishop's point, are either of the applicants here? And could they present, if they are here, could they maybe come and introduce themselves and just present themselves to the council and the community, please?
Yeah, I'd like to have a point of order. I believe that when we wish to speak, we should ask you for permission. I believe that's the protocol in every chamber and every, uh, board that I sit on. And instead of having people blurting out, I think it makes for a more orderly process, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Loa. I will try to be more diligent. Thank you.
Mayor, just an FYI, there's only one appointment. I just wanted to make that clear.
For two applicants.
Right.
Hi, my name is Patrick Brophy, and I'm, I was a teacher at the Palmdale Aerospace Academy for nine years. Currently, I'm a software engineer at Lockheed Martin. Uh, Skonk works out here, been doing that for one year. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of reasons I wanna, I wanna, I'd love to be on this board, and I want to help out, but it's, I really care about this school, and I really want it to succeed. I want it to be, I want it to be great. I was there from the beginning. I was, and I'm, I'm glad y'all showed up. It's amazing. I got like, there's like a dozen of them here. It's like, like, I, last minute, I applied for this, and I, I was, I was debating back and forth. I really want to do it. I like, I'm volunteering at the school, helping the robotics. I mean, I'm putting like ten hours a week in there. So I'm seeing a lot of people, but I, I see where it is right now, and I see where I'm in. And I'm in a position where I could potentially get on the board position and make a different change. And, and I, I think it's needed at this point. And, uh, it's, it's, there's a lot of things coming up at the school. You're talking about WASC, you're talking about charter reauthorization, negotiating with two unions now. And, and even the updating the strategic, uh, mission vision, uh, the strategic plan of the school. There's a lot of big pieces, big chunks in there that I think could really benefit from a voice in there with experience and how, how it ran before, and how it made it, made it great. In two thousand nineteen, it was, uh, uh, US News put it, the number one school in the AV. And back in two thousand nineteen, yeah. So it was there, and it, and I was there to experience it. I've seen the waitlist, I've seen the parents, the alumni, the students. And I'm, I'm gonna see them again Friday, because we got another meeting. Robotics doesn't quit. So I, I, I thank you for considering the application, and I hope I can do it well. And I hope we can make it work.
Any questions, Council?
We'll appoint Mr. Brophy. Move to appoint Mr. Brophy.
I will second that.
Is it called for the vote?
Before we do that, I just want to say thank you for your application, thank you for your commitment to our kids, and your energy is just infectious. And I'm excited for what you're gonna bring to this board. Thank you for stepping up.
And you live in District Four.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
There you go.
I'll make him sorry. It's a nice park.
All right. You know, you remember early on in, in the, the TPAA, that we had many, many engineers from our local aerospace companies come and mentor for free. And, and now that you've got your foot in the door over there, uh, just bring a lot in, like, let's get those mentors over there helping those kids.
Yeah, I work with some. They're already asking.
Okay, great.
I do want to thank the other applicant, Tracy Perkins. There's two very impressive applicants.
Before you do that.
And then also, thank you to your entire cheering crowd that came to support you. I see volumes, and we have so many people that are here to speak for you.
Call for the question.
Start voting.
Five yeses and motion passes. Okay, moving on to item number nine, nine point one, public hearing. Introduction and adoption of ordinance number sixteen thirteen. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving zoning ordinance amendment twenty-three dash zero zero one. And zone change, oh, no, Joan, sorry. Zone change twenty-three dash zero zero one at a request to modify Title seventeen. I thought it was be up there. Title seventeen of the Palmdale Municipal Code. To address and find that the amendment is consistent with Program Environmental Impact Report, P E I R, twenty-two dash zero zero two, prepared and certified in conjunction with City's General Plan, Palmdale, twenty forty-five.
It's a mouthful, definitely. Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Jasmine Almora. I'm with the Planning Division. And before you tonight is, uh, item for a zoning ordinance amendment twenty-three dash zero zero one and zone change twenty-three dash zero zero one. On March fifteenth, the city council adopted zoning ordinance amendment for a comprehensive update to Title seventeen of the Palmdale Municipal Code. The pers, the purpose of this zoning ordinance amendment and zone change is to address inconsistencies, clarify review procedures, and correct section references. Um, staff would like to note that discussions with the development community regarding drive-through facilities and other items continue. On various occasions, staff has requested red lines to review and discuss. Um, however, at this moment, none have been provided to date. Any future modifications presented will be brought forward at a later time. In addition, the zoning ordinance amendment will update the associated zoning map, um, to create, uh, correct one parcel that should be, um, zone mobile home. Uh, to be consistent with the general plan land use map. As shown here, the Palmdale Mobile Park can be seen outlined in red. And with that, staff in the planning commission recommend to adopt zoning ordinance amendment, oh, sorry, zoning number sixteen thirteen, approving zoning ordinance amendment twenty-three dash zero zero one, and zone change twenty-three dash zero zero one. And staff is available for any questions.
Should, um, Mr. Attorney, should I open to public comments first, or should the council ask their questions first?
It would be better to ask your questions, so the public will have heard your concerns.
Okay. Council, let's say you. Anybody have any questions regarding this ordinance? No questions?
Mayor, um, just for the most part, it's just clarifying as it stated in the, uh, staff report.
Correct, now that, sorry.
And one section was left out of the, uh, ordinance earlier, um, that is being plugged back in. I think that inadvertently it was left out, and then it was, it's now being included. So it's just clarifying.
Correct.
The ordinance.
Mm-hmm, and now that staff has been working directly with the new code, um, we found some inconsistencies that we wanted to clean up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if the council has no questions, I'll go ahead and open this, um, for public comments for this item. Do we have any speaker cards?
Jason's ink.
I will say, just for the record, that, that funds for that, uh, the tiny home thing is city funds. That thirty-five million dollars was given to the city by the federal government for COVID relief. So that is city funds. So when staff says that, they're wrong. Uh, now let's talk about this. This whole thing, this whole process, the, the general plan, this just proves my point. That it was hastily approved. There were so many mistakes. There's still mistakes all over this thing. But I want you guys to look at all the mistakes that they did. They, they didn't even, two of you are appointed to the, uh, Antelope Valley Air Board, right? But yet, they had so, uh, Southern California Air Board in the document. You see what I'm saying? These are simple, common sense things. There are still mistakes. I went to Mike Miller before this, before it came before the council to fix all these problems. He said, I take it to the, uh, city manager and Louise and Megan, nothing happened. And they allowed a, a messed up document for you guys to approve. Staff is sloppy. They're all getting paid hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars for this stuff that I can just read, and I, I just graduated from Palmdale High. But let's talk about, there's, there's a thing in there, I times, there's a thing in there that says they'll allow residential, they're allowed residential in, uh, regional commercial and by the mall. Yet, and I talked to you about this. My property, uh, that I sold to a client, which is on, uh, Division NR and the freeway, the city wouldn't allow him to build apartments. He wanted to build six hundred units to help with the housing crisis, and the city wouldn't give it to him. I don't know if it's because, it was because of me or what. But I need you to fix that, Mayor, and City Council. That's six hundred units. There's still mistakes. I'm, I'm to help you fix.
I just want you to know that I gave Jason extra time because somebody's phone was ringing during his speech. Um, if we could please silence our phones, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
No additional comment cards, Mayor.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comments.
If there's no further discussion by the council, happy to move it.
Second.
And motion a second, could we pop the vote? Okay.
I'm doing it?
This way?
Okay.
Motion passes with five yeses and zero noes. Moving on to item number nine point two. Come on up.
Okay, I'll go ahead and get started anyway. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The item, the item before you tonight is ordinance number sixteen fourteen. An ordinance of the city of council of the city of Palmdale approving various amendments to the Palmdale Municipal Code. This ordinance includes amendments to the municipal code in part of the efforts of the general plan update that was adopted in September of last year. The proposed amendments include section references, references of authorized designees to be consistent with new review processes, references to land uses to be consistent with the permissions table within Title seventeen, and the addition of chapter eight point four eight regarding the regulation of legal dumping. It is important to note that staff did not include any modifications to Title five, because we are working with other departments to streamline the business permit process, and that will be before you later this fall. That concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions. We, um, recommend that the city council adopt ordinance number sixteen fourteen. Thank you.
Okay, Council, let's say you.
I think this is where, uh, Madam Mayor, um, putting in a, a portion of the ordinance that was inadvertently left out. It was actually this one and not the last.
Yes, it's this one.
So, anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, and, uh, regarding Jason's comments about the topographical errors, we, we, we do need to be more careful. Um, I know that we push a lot of paper out, and we have a lot of typing and things go out, but once, once it hits the public, it should be right. So I'm not pointing my finger at you or anybody else. I, I understand how difficult the task can be. Um, but, uh, if, if we do it right the first time, we don't have to redo it. So just, I, I do recognize that when the public reads it, they take their red pen to it, especially if they've ever taught a class anywhere. And, uh, it, it can be a little, a little harrowing, so. Um, thank you, Jason, for your comments on that. Thank you for what you do, and I know it's a very difficult task. And I hope that between all of us, together as a team, that we will prevent, uh, the typos from happening in the future.
Great, thank you.
All right. Now's the time for public comments. Do we have any speaker cards?
Jason's ink.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor. Uh, just again, I just want, uh,
the properties that were changed, the zoning downzoned, my clients, they shouldn't be downzoned just because I speak up at these city council meetings and against staff. And that's what happened, you know? Uh, Dr. Mock, he, and he had owned several properties in, in Palmdale and other clients I have. Millions of dollars they've invested. They want to create jobs. They want to provide housing and retail and all this stuff. And not one staff member has met with them. Is that right? The only people, now, at the last meeting, the staff said, uh, we've met with, uh, developers and landowners and stuff. Those are only people, and I've seen them all, that donated money to you guys. My people didn't donate money to you guys. But those people got what they wanted because they donated to you. That's not right. That's corruption. That's backdoor. That's stealing. I don't want to live in a city like this. Just because we have disagreements, we have to do what's right. We have to be excellent. And we have a lot of, we just, it's just, I don't know. Right now, we'd be building those six hundred units. We'd be building that, that retail store and storage units. I mean, it's like, I don't get it. I don't get it. You guys are preventing Palmdale progress because of staff. And that's it. Please don't let this happen. Please have staff meet with, um, my clients. That's all I'm asking.
So, Jason, don't leave yet. So the, the six hundred units you were talking about, Division NR, and this Dr. Mock?
No, that's another client.
That's a different one?
Yeah.
Okay, and the other one is up on Pear Blossom Highway that we talked about, is that correct?
Yeah, on Forty-Fifth.
That's the storage.
And we have the, uh, property right next to, uh, Marine Curve Park.
Right, we talked about that, okay. I just want to make sure I'm ready.
Others, but.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No additional speakers.
No additional speakers, so I'll go ahead and move to close public comments. And do I have a motion or a second?
I'm making a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we're gonna use the electronic voting. Okay.
It says no second or. Just FYI, it said no second or on the motion. It only showed no second or on our computer.
The motion again.
Okay.
Motion passes with five yeses and zero noes. Okay, moving on to item nine point three. And introduction and adoption of ordinance number sixteen eleven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale, amending section two point oh eight, point oh one oh of the Palmdale Municipal Code to establish the process to annually designating the mayor and selecting the mayor pro tem staff or city attorney or city manager. Who would like to take this? It's a city attorney's item.
Well, I'm taking it. Um, as you know, for a while, uh, since the, the appointment of the present mayor last year, uh, there has been an issue or a concern about establishing a, a transparent, reliable, simple, uh, process to select the mayors. And after much discussion and, and looking at other jurisdictions and consulting with staff and, and talking, uh, getting input from the, the council, this structure where using the five districts in numerical sequence, one, two, three, four, five, uh, allocating a district, uh, each incumbent of the district for each annual mayoral selection made the most sense. So first year District One, well, we have the, the tweak here, because our first year was District Three. We'll take that out of sequence, so rather than one, two, three, four, five, if adopted, it'd be three, one, two, four, five. Uh, that would not be repeated in future sequences. It would just be adjusting, uh, to reflect the, the process used last year of a more random selection.
So that was just because we, the previous council had not put something in place. It was kind of emergency that we get it done.
Right.
And I ended up being your guinea pig, right?
You, you did very well on the fly trying to come up with a process. In the interim, you took time to be a little more, uh, thoughtful or considering all of the variables. So this structure here of following one, two, three, four, five, uh, it's predictable. The community will know years in advance what the cycle is. The incumbents of each district will know their. The incumbents of each district will know their time of being mayor is coming forward. As to mayor pro tem, the, the draft before you has it a selection by majority council vote. That gives an opportunity for the incoming mayor perhaps to try to, to find somebody uh they feel most comfortable with or anybody who wants to run. You could conceivably be mayor pro tem five years in a row. Well, four years because one, you'd be mayor, but the alternative would be to consider the mayor pro tem as the next in line district. So if District One is up for the mayor, District Two would be the mayor pro tem following that repeating cycle. Either one is work. There's no law that defines which process is better. Again, this seemed to have the, the most consensus as laid out, but the, the, the more predictable secondary uh district, so District One with District Two is pro tem, that's also an option. Again, this is the result of eight months of discussion. So uh, we turn it over to you for your discussion. There's no right nor wrong per se.
I, I have a question. Um, supposing we get a new council person uh in the next round and they end up in District One, no offense, Mr. Austin. And a lot of people run because they want to be council people. Sometimes people run and they don't want to be mayor, believe it or not. What happens if we get a new council person says, I'm not ready to be mayor. Pass on me this time. Is there something in the ordinance that allows them to, they just have to wait till they cycle back?
Well, we, we didn't address.
We can't force them to be mayor.
Well, we, we didn't address that pointedly because the notion seemed impossible, but it could be. Certainly, if someone didn't want to be mayor, uh, we could build in that it would shift the cycle. Move it forward. So if District One didn't want to be it, it would shift to District Two and follow that same, I'll say mathematical sequence.
And the only reason I ask that is because back in two thousand nine, when I first ran, I think I was ninety days in when I came up. We do mayor pro tem as rotation and I came up to be mayor pro tem. I had only had ninety days under my belt. I was not prepared to fulfill the role of a mayor pro tem at that time. So I passed on it and I never got a chance again ever until two thousand tw- uh twenty-one. So it took me a long time to get back to being available to be mayor pro tem. So but you, you don't want somebody who's completely inexperienced either with ninety days under their belt, you know, probably running the important position of a, of a mayor. So if a person decides to pass, I want to make sure that they don't have to wait another ten or twelve years to have the opportunity.
Yeah, can we build something into where if somebody doesn't want to uh participate in that role, it can just skip to the next, next person in line.
I, I don't think they're honest to be, so.
You're not getting out of it, Austin.
I would, real quick, I would like to, from being on this council for years, I would like to see the mayor pro tem go back to rotational option. Rather than being selected, I think it takes a lot of the headache out of it. It's predictable.
Well, you know how I felt about it at the time because I was a little open about my feelings at the time.
And yeah, I understand.
So I'll probably just not make a comment on that. But I agree. I think uh everyone should have the opportunity to participate. And I think at the time that you guys removed the mayor pro tem from rotation, I think that kind of put a stain on the council because if you rely on people to pick their friends, pick the people they like best or people that donated to their campaign as opposed to be on a fair rotation, I don't think that puts the city in a good light. And that's what happened. We were on rotation and then we weren't on a rotation. So I, I'm very torn about this because I've seen both sides of the, of the coin.
Yeah. I see, I see the rotation work for a lot of other cities, uh, school boards, the supervisor board, they all rotate. They all take their turns, whether they're chair, vice chair, pro tem, whatever it is. That seems to be the more common practice these days.
Yeah, but I, but I also know that the mayor pro tem is supposed to stand in and represent or fill in when the mayor is unavailable. And I, I, I'll just, I'll just say it openly. Um, when I finally was originally the mayor pro tem for Mr. Hoffbauer, he made some very disparaging comments about how I would never be his mayor pro tem and that Loa always would be. And for the entire year, he never once contacted me to uh fill in for him, to stand in at a ribbon cutting, to do any events on his behalf because I was not his choice for mayor pro tem. And so that makes our city look bad when nobody shows up for a ribbon cutting or nobody shows up for an event. So having a rotational mayor would actually prevent that from happening because if you have conflict between council members and one doesn't like the other one as, as a mayor pro tem, that, you know, I, I, I get it that sometimes we're, we're not perfect people and we don't always agree a hundred percent with each other. But you got to put the city first. You've got to be able to say, um, I can't make it, you know, all, all it would have taken was a phone call and I would have been at the event. But I never even knew that the other person was not going to show. And then we had nobody show from the city. So I'm, I'm very torn about this. I'm, I'm open to comments from you guys.
So I had, just have, I have a couple of questions. I think to your point, I'm going to ask this question out of order. So based on my reading of, of the draft of this ordinance, council District Three will fare the worst of all districts. Because the next time council District Three will have an opportunity to cycle in as mayor will be in twenty thirty, thirty-one? That's seven years out. That's beyond the five years that every other council District.
I won't be here.
But I'm not saying, it's not specific to you. It's specific to the district. It's just sort of, District Three just gets sort of.
Will there be a pro tem? See, it doesn't skip pro tem, does it?
Well, I think that that should be a provision. If we're going to have the pro tem be next in line and we're going to go through a provision where we say a district cannot be represented twice within a full rotation, that should apply to both.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. Am I correct in that council District Three will fare the worst and will not have another opportunity to cycle in as mayor for seven years out?
That means I better do a doggone good job now because it's going to have to last.
I mean, is, am I, I'm asking a question. Is that correct?
Well, uh, yeah, it is. Um, this structure was actually in, in consultation with the mayor. If we started one, two, three again, she would be in three years, which was viewed as unfair having two in the five-year cycle. And um, so the only way to kind of cushion that was to look at five districts, each with a year. That's a five-year block, normally doing one, two, three, four, five, acknowledging this year or this cycle, if you will, this five-year block because she was randomly appointed last year. It's out of sequence. It wasn't looked at as gee, let's punish a district. It was, we've just by dint of uh no process created a, a disruption in this first five-year process. I mean, there, there's nothing that says, uh, you could take that out and you can start this year, one, two, three, four, five, and uh, Mayor Bettencourt could get a second bite at the apple.
So the current, the current ordinance says, and the reason why, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, the reason why we selected by lot the mayor last cycle, District Three ended up being selected by lot was because of the implementation, implementation of by-district elections. And the ordinance as it exists now says that the, the, in order to get the cycle moving, the first mayor will be selected by lot and then will rotate. You know, now we're rotating backwards um to start at one. Um, I think the whole purpose, I think selecting by lot was to start at three and then continue. It literally says, and then we'll rotate. Happy to support it, but I, I, there are a couple of issues actually with the language of the ordinance that, um, so it says on an annual basis at the first meeting in December, but says, says shall be designated as the mayor for the calendar following year. Currently, we let, no, but, but if, so you took office December twenty-first. No, you took it, you were, you became mayor when we got sworn in that day.
I think that was originally written. We only had one council meeting a month, so there was no chance to have two.
Right, so I'll, this is the, no, this is the new draft that he's proposing. So I'm suggesting that if we're, if the, if the mayor is going to take office in January, then why don't we do it at the first meeting in January? I don't.
Oh, that makes sense, okay.
Just, if we're going to start in January, let them finish out the year and start January. Then the, my second question, or not question, it's just a note. Um, there's a typo in section three. Uh, last, last sentence, it says a major is designated. I think it's just supposed to be mayor.
That got caught on a draft that didn't get in there, but going back to the uh doing it in December, many cities do it in December so the incoming mayor can prepare their thoughts, their vision for the year, all of their housekeeping, if you will. So when they do take the, the seat in January, they have the full twelve-month period. They don't lose some time finding out their mayor and then having to think up what they're going to do.
Understood. That would make sense if it weren't on a rotation because they're going to know, if they're the number, they're going to know they're going to be it.
Again, there's no right nor wrong. This was the consensus we've received. If you want to do it differently, just tell us.
Well, let's, let's just do something.
Do we have to do?
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to do is make a motion to approve this item and then let's see where.
Do we want to approve it with any amendments, like, like keep the rotation?
The mayor pro tem and things that you were talking about is, that's before we move, I think there's still conversation on how we process.
Okay, we, so we have, we have the motion on the table. Can, can you turn your mic on?
I'd like to move, like to move to approve the item. And um, if I get a second, we'll, we'll discuss and then we can take action. Because right now it's just sort of a random conversation here.
Do we have to do public comment before we vote on a motion?
Well, I would think so, but I mean, I'm making a motion, then we can have public comment and we can have other commentary.
We can still make amendments?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we have a motion, but now we're going to open the public comment, see what, what the, what our residents have to say.
So there is a motion, but there is no second.
Right. So that, yes, but maybe we'll have one as soon as we get down to public comments. I don't know.
Okay.
So do we have any public comments?
I think we, I'll, I'll go ahead and second it and then.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and now we'll call a public comments.
Jason's ink.
This is the sin of the city because you guys took the power away from the people and who they get to elect as mayor. You guys did that. You didn't, this should have been on a ballot measure to do what you guys did. We should be able to say we want to vote for mayor or we want this system of rotation. So I want this to put on the ballot in March or as soon as possible and ask the people. I know Eric that you said that you'd like to go back to uh mayor being elected. I've heard other of you guys say that. So let's do that. Or let's do five-year terms. Right? Or let's have three districts and we vote for the mayor and the pro, uh, mayor pro tem. This is a time that we need to bring these ideas right now and clear this sin of what this city did to get rid of a mayor. So that's what we need to do. We need to have this discussion. Can we put this to a ballot and let the people decide how they want to be governed? Thank you for your time.
Marcus Alvarez.
Marcus Alvarez.
Good evening, everyone. Democracy is defined as a government by, run by elected officials, voted by the people. I'm listening to this rhetoric because that's what it is. Some of you are here to do just that. What am I talking about? You ran to help the people. Some of you ran for self-interest. So none of this rhetoric would have been taking place right now if we shift the power back to the citizens of this community. I love this community. Think about that. If the community elected you, shouldn't the community be allowed to vote for a mayor as well? And I know, I don't know, I haven't done my homework in terms of redistricting. Maybe that had something to do with it, to represent communities that were not represented before. But at the end of the day, this right here, the position that all of you hold is an elected position by the people and it should be shifted, the power back to the people on who they want as a mayor to represent their community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Vicky Ventura.
Good evening, city council. Laura Bancourt, you say you were torn apart. I am torn apart. I couldn't agree more with Jason and Mr. Alvarez that this should go back to the ballot and we should go back to the people so that we could vote and decide who we want to represent as mayor and pro tem mayor. I believe that every single one of you got voted in your seats, well, except the term, right, but I totally agree that this should go back to the people. You took our vote, you took our voice. And I think that it should go back to the people. So please reconsider. Maybe you need to educate us on this redistricting and why are we doing it the way we're doing it? But I hear a lot from our small business community, from our citizens, that this is not right. That this was, the, the, the vote was taken from us and that it's not right, that it should not be that way. So if you all reconsider and give it back to the people, give us back our voice. Let us decide. If you're doing a great job, I can guarantee you're going to get that seat. Nobody's going to take it from you. So please, give it back to us. Thank you.
Next speaker?
No further speakers.
Oh, one more. Two more. I don't sound like a shoe. There we go.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Como dijo Marcos, Vicky.
As Marcos and Vicky stated.
Es importante que la comunidad decida.
It's very important that the community decides. Who's going to be the next mayor? You need to take that into consideration. Comments of the community also needs to be taken into account. Thank you. Next speaker, Marsha?
Thank you. Establishing a fixed rotation for our ceremonial mayor will offer each district the opportunity to see their elected representative in the center seat. The position of mayor pro tem, while not taking center stage too often, it is the position where that responsibility to be the mayor in the mayor's seat may came, may come up. I'm very uncomfortable with the council members being able to elect that position with the possibility of restoring to, restoring, going back to the good old boy days uh mentality of old. Several of our present council members subscribed to that way of doing business in the past. And with the recent exposed loyalties to Lancaster council member by council, exposed loyalties to Lancaster's council members by the majority of our sitting members, I would like to see the rotation of the mayor pro tem established or a restriction placed on the repeat of them being elected. I'm here, we're here tonight to establish how this is going to flow. How we got here is not the issue today. Why not start? We have the third district. Next year, let's do it with the fourth district, the fifth district, all this. Let's go back to one. She's going to be in five years, seven years. Year three, let's go to four next. And let's get a rotation for the pro tem. I don't want any good old boy club going on.
Edie Benham, Chair and Counsel. I agree with everything Marsha just said. I, I think that rotation would work very, very well. At three now, let's go four, five, then one, two, three, and do it that way. But um, just to. But um, just to clarify, I think it's extremely important that people understand uh why we took away the uh um election at large of the mayorship. You guys have to remember, and this is something I've been writing about, you know eh, uh answering uh statements made by past Mayor Ledford, uh Mr. Loa, um Fred Thompson, uh the city attorney, all of you stated that uh redistricting was not necessary. There was no racial or racist intent uh for polarized voting. And therefore, uh the remedy shouldn't be districts by election, or elections by district. But both during the uh hearing, the two, three-year hearing that took place, both the city attorneys and uh the attorneys for the plaintiff, who was it, you, Mr. Curly? Uh, your previous, your predecessor. Everybody agreed that there was racial polarized voting. And that two groups were being impacted um by that voting. And that was African-Americans and Latinos, so whites were voting as a group. Latinos were voting as a group, blacks were voting as a group, but Latinos and blacks never got their candidates elected. Even though they voted for whites sometimes, or Latinos sometimes, or African, it didn't matter, their candidates never won. That binding is what caused the remedy. Well, guess what, the mayor.
You, you can go ahead and turn his mic back on, he, he's kinda giving the history of how we got here, so please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. So you know, people need to understand, put it into a proposition, let the voters vote. If they vote for something illegal, they're gonna lose anyways, you guys have to understand. We did away with an illegal process and put in a legal process. So even if the voters vote for something that's illegal, we're just, if the voters say we want elections at large again for the mayorship, and we can prove racial polarized voting, we will win that lawsuit. Right, Mr. Curly? Okay, so stop this nonsense. You know, we, we, we're, where we're at for a very good reason. It's to try to be as fair as possible, nobody said it was gonna be perfect, nobody said, said everybody was gonna be in agreement with it. As a matter of fact, a lot of you have just agreed with it since day one and haven't changed their minds yet. Doesn't matter, what's legal, is legal, and what's fair is fair, and this is the fairest process we've got, thank you.
Next speaker? Speakers? Oh, one more.
Good evening, um, if, if I understand correctly, well, I've been a resident here for thirty-six years. And my entire life, up until last year, we've always voted for a mayor. And if I'm correct, it was legal, a lawsuit for a fifth district, which got rid of, in, in my learnings. I don't think it's ever been illegal to vote for a mayor, that's kinda asinine, I've never heard of that in my life, but. I always thought, you know, that's basically how things are done, um, whether or not people agree with it, that's just the way our system has been drawn out for two-hundred-and-something years. So, a lawsuit led to enacting a fifth district, which was supposed to be represented by somebody who lives in the city, in the fifth district, right, correct? So, that is why we no longer vote for the mayor. And you kinda touched on it earlier, Mayor, that there may be some people that are not willing to be mayor pro tem. And back in November, December, when this became an issue, I came up and suggested, people may not wanna be mayor. People run for council to be council, right, and now they're getting shoved into the position as a mayor. So, since there's been illegal action taken to strip the people of their voice, right? Strip the people from the voting for the mayor, is there a way that we can get that back on the ballot? Can we somehow revote, you know, get that back to what it used to be as opposed to what it is now? And if that's not possible, um, if you guys aren't agreeing with what has been brought forth tonight, you know, can you table this, can you make whatever amendment changes that you would like to see? Or maybe have a, a discussion with the people, do one of those, can't think of the words, but you know, like a, a coffee shop scenario, and see what the people would want. It's my suggestion, thank you.
Any other speakers?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Perta Dealegria, and I just wanna say that, you know, when people elected you, it was for a specific district. You wanted to be a council member, you were not running for mayor. And I think, you know, it's important for you to uh address, focus on the interests of your districts. And if somebody really wants to be a mayor, then, you know, you can run for mayor. But again, I don't think it's right for a council to take that power from the people. Because maybe, you know, somebody voted for you for, you know, that district, but maybe somebody else would rather vote for you for mayor. So, eh, you know, to each its own, and if you would like to run for mayor, then let somebody else represent your district, so you can focus on your campaign to run for mayor. I think that's how the city would best served, thank you.
Thank you, any other speakers? Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments on this item. Um, council, what's there you?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a correction.
Mr. Go, go ahead.
Oh, Mr., while it's true that um, I was elected at large um in two thousand and one. And um, it's been said here before, and it was again said tonight, that I'm not the candidate of the Latino people. And yet, when I ran in two thousand and one, that's where I got most of my support in Latino districts in East Palm Dale. So that's one correction. The other correction is, that while I supported at-large elections for the entire city council, once the judgment came down, I was in full support of the judgment. And indeed, we adopted a map that many of the people that were proposing another map were not in agreement with. As a result of that, there was, either a motion was filed or was threatened to be filed to renew this litigation with, with the court that had already made a judgment, to go from at-large districts to districts, and electing a mayor directly. In order to avoid further litigation in front of a judge that had already uh made rulings insofar as how this process was going to work, including a portion of the judgment stating that the mayor should be elected directly. But in order to stave off any further litigation on that issue, that led to the motion to adopt five districts, and that resolved the question. And of course, that resulted in uh having a rotational mayor, which we then went to the um picking of a mayor eh at random. So, for anyone to say that I was against redistricting is absolutely wrong and mistaken. I was, I was in favor, I was in favor of, I was in favor of keeping the at-large system. In fact, Latinos did get elected under that system, but once the ruling came down, I totally believe in the rule of law. And so we had a long, drawn-out process uh for the districting of, and the reordering of the maps. And when we adopted one particular map that was recommended by our consultant, that was opposed by uh plaintiff's attorney in that lawsuit. And uh threatened litigation over that. And so the resolution was that we would go to the five districts, and that was voted, I believe it was voted three to one, four to one, that was voted four to one.
By the previous council. By the previous council.
By the previous council, correct.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say that, you know, I'm more familiar with the mayor at large and having a directly selected mayor until the California Voters Rights Act came out and, and uh started challenging cities in California to go to this uh, this type of system. Looking further into it, I've, I've realized that two-thirds of all of the cities in LA County have this rotational system. So it's, it's something that's been adopted more and more, and it's continuing to be adopted. As much as, you know, uh, Richard and I were very vocal that we prefer, preferred the at-large system, we're more used to it. But it's just, it's the California's uh Voters Rights Act that uh kinda has our hands tied a little bit here.
Madam Mayor, do you mind? So I just wanna be clear right now, that the action we're gonna take is different than the action the previous council already took to remove that directly elected mayor. All we're doing is saying that that already happened, now we're gonna define what the rotation is. So that's the action we're going to take, that being said, since we're talking about it, the original judgment said, from the judge, that removing the directly elected mayor was not an appropriate remedy for the concerns of the VRA. That judge wanted districts, he didn't say you had to remove the directly elected mayor. I think it's appropriate to have a directly elected mayor, so I would like to ask staff to research and report back to us the process and feasibility to bring back the directly elected mayor.
Um, Mr. Ellison, are, are you saying that we should table this item and wait to see?
No, I'm just saying that this, that, that's a completely different conversation, but since we're having that conversation, I let it be known how I feel. Now, in the interim, we have to have a rotation, because what I suggested to staff cannot happen overnight. So we have to have a process in place to rotate, but I would personally like to see a directly elected mayor.
And I agree with that, I, I, Eric, I agree, we can look into that and see. Let's, let's look at the legality of that, but that's, that's for another time.
And that's, and that's the word that I want to emphasize, is the legality of it. Because uh, we went to the five districts to resolve a legal problem. And if we go to the direct mayor, which I'm in favor of, but if it gets us right back into the litigation with the plaintiffs, with the California uh act, then it's just gonna put us right back to where we were previously. And so I, I think, I agree, we should have staff, staff take a look at it, but it should also uh make sure that it uh takes the plaintiffs in that lawsuit into account uh in reaching any kind of suggestion on this, on this.
I, I'd like to get some comments from our city manager.
So, we can look into this, uh, it would depend basically on what election you would like it to go to. It can go to the primary in March, or it can go to the election in twenty twenty-four and be effective at some future date. Um, something that you may, would need to consider through the process is, does it add a mayor? Does it change the districting, does it, what do all those options look like?
I, I'm only shaking my head because of this timing of a ballot measure, the drafting of ballot measure, putting it before, you know, it has to go to Secretary's Day. There's no way you could go before the voters in March.
We would have to have.
That's an imposs- impossibility.
We would have to have it to count before council in November to go to the primary in March, and that's a very tight timeframe. So, um, it would likely have to be on the next one, and then one, the things that we would have to consider is, like I said, does it add a district? Or does it add two to keep us at an odd number, um, does it take away, and so all of that is what accounts for the timing. If you're gonna eliminate a district and bring back the directly elected mayor, that would have to be at the end of a term.
All I'm asking for is that research and report.
We will do that.
Can, can you also include the public in that research, like maybe do a, a survey?
So that was going to be my point, I was, I was gonna hopefully bring this back to what, what is before us today. I mean, there are a lot of legal questions at hand, and um clearly some legal research that needs to be done. Um, you know, I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna give my two cents on, on the legal position of the city and the California Voting Rights Act, although I, I have plenty of sense to offer. Uh, but with regard to what is before us today, um, you know, we, we, when we were deciding what time our council meetings should be and what day they should be, we went out and did a survey. We're talking about who's going to be the next mayor, um, at a minimum. I think we should do a survey, I mean, it's just a simple, let's just put it out there for, I mean, there's no urgency with, with this, I mean, it's August. We have, it's August, we, if we're not going to implement a new mayor until January, we've got some time to at least get some feedback, so that we can at least say we got public input on the matter. This is something that's so critical, I know each and every one of us has heard the feedback, that the selection of mayor has, what they were calling it a circus, it was a debacle, it was, I mean, we heard it all. Um, I think the original intent was selection by lot and then a, a rotation thereafter. So I think the thought process was it goes from three to four to five, and then circle back to one. But if we're gonna deviate from that, okay, I think Austin, I think you'd be an amazing mayor. But that's, you know, I think, it's not for me to decide, it's for the city to decide. Uh, and at least, I think, we could, we could engage in a public survey that's online and send it out and do some social media outreach, and just get some feedback, just to get a sense of what people want. But not, 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 not things that are with it, with, outside of our legal parameters now. Only things that we can, we can, um, we can navigate today within the constraints of the judgment that was already uh set forth. And, you know, you know, whether or not the mayor pro tem rotates uh sequentially, or rotates immediately in, or, you know, do we start at one, do we, do we go from three, four, five, what, whatever, I mean, at least questions that relate to what we are, what we, what is at hand today. I think, legal questions, I think that goes far beyond uh the scope of what we can do and what we need to do by January. So, that's just my suggestion, I, my suggestion is we table this, and we make some of these amendments, just a little minor typos. We table it until we get some feedback uh from the community. And then we can, we can have a vibrant conversation, we can also do outreach and say, hey, the council is going to be discussing the selection of the mayor on this day at council, if you're, if you wanna come, come and, come and comment. Because this, I mean, we've got not very many people in the room, half of, half of these folks are staff. I don't know that this is representative of the hundred seventy thousand people that the city represents, so I just would like to see more feedback.
I do hope they're watching. Pay a lot, pay a lot of money for this.
I think my, my point is just, I just, I feel like we need more feedback, that's all.
So, so you're making the motion to table item?
Well, we have a motion on the second on the floor to just adopt this as is, I, we can call for the role on that, or we can rescind that, and then we can, I mean, it's.
Well, I figured we talked about some amendments or some changes as far as rotational mayor pro tem and uh the ability to pass. If, you know, your, your time comes and you don't wanna serve as either the pro tem or the mayor.
So do we, we wanna accept the motions that have already been posted with some amendments to making the mayor pro tem rotational also?
I would ask for two amendments, if you don't mind.
Okay.
One is to add the provision uh that anybody can deny the, the rotation if they'd like, like you mentioned mayor. And another provision that says that the mayor pro tem next in line shall serve with the same provision and uh the same language that a district cannot be represented twice within a full rotation.
But that's already, that's already part of the motion.
Yes, yes.
So let me understand.
No. Yes, you may speak, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
My understanding, the first amendment is that the mayor pro tem will also be on a rotational basis. And so uh, I'm assuming that uh it would be the, the process would begin, the mayor's, if we adopt this, the mayor would be uh the representative from council district one, and then the mayor pro tem would be district two, and then it would rotate around that way, is that, is that your proposal?
Is that your proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
So that way you're mayor pro tem, you're mayor, and then you're council for three years.
Okay.
If you.
So, so in this instance, you would be, if that's say, district one would be the mayor, and then district two would be the mayor pro tem.
Right.
And then it would rotate.
Okay.
Alright, now.
So we have that motion, you, you, you're the amended emotion, a mo- a motion, sorry, amended motion.
Yeah, the other motion.
You would have, hold on, you guys, so he made an amend, a friendly amendment, three amendments to your motion. Both the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion need to accept the, the amendments.
Do you accept them, sir?
I accept it, but I'm. I accept it, but I'm trying to figure out exactly what, uh, Mr. Olson stated, so one of them is, um.
You, you summarize it correctly, that. We will start at district one, the mayor pro tem will be district two, everything will rotate accordingly. A district shall not be represented twice for mayor and mayor pro tem until the full rotation.
Okay.
Also with the provision that either mayor or the next in line for mayor pro tem can. Ship to the next in line.
I, I, I agree with that, um, those proposed amendments.
What about you, Austin?
The maker of the motion has to. The second, you're the second? Second has to agree too.
I agree.
Well, wait a minute, mayor.
We're not done yet.
I think you are the one that makes the calls here. You're the mayor.
I, I understand, I, I, I just hate to cut people off when they have a thought, cuz I know that if you cut me off mid thought, I'm probably gonna forget the thought. So I'm trying to be very respectful of people's opinion sometime to speak, so give, give me, give me just a little, little leniency here. I think, Andrea, you had something you wanna say, Olson?
I did, I just, so there, those amendments are pretty substantive amendments. Um, and given that there are already some, um, corrections that need to be made to the draft ordinance as was presented tonight. There needs to be some reworking of the ordinance so that we can fully understand and grapple with and make sure that the language of the ordinance. Reflects the intent of the council, there is no urgency in adopting this tonight. I really would like to see us s- send this back to the city attorney, have him revise it to reflect. The requested amendments and the, uh, the requested amendments, so that we can see the language in full. At the same time simultaneously getting feedback from the community, so that when it comes back. We can either adopt it as is, if the, if the city says that's wonderful, that's exactly what we want, then we adopt it and move forward. If the city reflects some, you know, preference in terms of tweaking it a little, we still have the ability to do that. But there, I don't, I think adopting this without seeing the language of the ordinance and these amendments. I think is tying our hands and, and not allowing the community the opportunity to offer feedback.
So I just wanted to do a, a, a flash to the past, this is kinda where we were. Before, and that's how I ended up becoming the mayor by pulling a ping pong ball. I think having something in place is better than having nothing in place, otherwise we're gonna end up pulling out a ping pong ball. The next time this comes around, so I say, let's get something solidified, um, we could tweak it along the way, right?
Well, we don't even know what the writing is.
May I like to ask a question of the city attorney? Do you have a language in place, uh, for the motion and the amendments that have been suggested? Maybe.
Mr. Curly, we attempted to col- uh, to.
Well, I, I will read what I think I heard and. Let me know. Okay, the section A designation of mayor stays the same. We will start with district one, district two, skip district three, so that section is, is being left alone, that's correct.
No, it says first meeting in December.
So as opposed to the first meeting in Septem- uh, sorry, December, we wanna make it January.
Well, the, the rotation, I think, is what the substance is. Whichever you want, I mean, that's, that's minutia, whatever you want. The, the B section designation of mayor pro tem. The city council, after installing the mayor. Shall designate the incumbent in the next in order numerical council, council district. Following the mayor's district as the mayor pro tem. So if it's one, two becomes it, if it's three, four becomes it. We pick up in that the last language out of A. Notwithstanding the foregoing, no electoral district in the city shall have a representative served twice within a five-year period. That was the, the tag Mr. Olson, uh, referenced. That is what I've heard, the only unknown beyond December or January is. If someone chooses to decline mayor or mayor pro tem. It would throw all the, the numbering off, but you could either A, go to the next number. Or in that case, it could be by majority vote. Either one works, it's whatever your pleasure might be.
Well, I think you need to put it in the ordinance.
Right.
And I believe that you ought to put it in the rotational mode, in other words. If a person is the, is going to be the mayor but declines to be the mayor, then it would go to the next.
The next number.
The, the next number.
That would be C, we've got A for mayor, B for mayor pro tem. C will be the default, uh, for any deferrals of those offices.
Okay.
So is that an amendment to the, the existing motion again? I mean, that's an additional provision that was not discussed.
No, it was discussed, it was discussed by.
No, you suggested that, 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 that the alternate be the next rotated, that's different than what was discussed.
No, I was, I was reacting to Mr. Olson, who was nodding, uh, in any event, I believe that.
Should I make a fresh motion to accept what Curly said? Would that be easier?
Yeah, let's do that.
I'll make the motion to accept what our city attorney just stated.
Okay, we've already got a motion on the floor.
We've got like three motions going here.
I don't know that that's procedurally correct, but I mean, the city attorney can, can correct me if I'm wrong. I just, there's no urgency with which we must adopt this today, we could literally bring it back in two weeks.
Unfortunately.
When we have language.
That's what we said last time, there was no urgency, and then we ended up pulling out a ping pong ball.
No, but if we've got the language, they can come back in two weeks. It can come back in two weeks with actual language.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And I believe you're gonna make an alternate motion.
I'm, I'm making the alternate motion to accept the, the ordinance with the amendments that our city attorney has stated.
And I'll second that.
So we, we have a motion and a second.
I, I just, as a lawyer, and the devil is always in the details, the, the actual language of the ordinance is so important. Um, it would be really key for me and for the, the members of this council and for the public. To be able to read and un- fully understand exactly what is being proposed here before we, we implement an ordinance. We could literally bring this back in two weeks, he's got it sort of written, let's let him write it out. Bring it back in two weeks, and then we, we, everybody is fully aware of what we're, what we're dealing with.
Well, alternatively too, you can amend an ordinance, rescind it, replace it. Every meeting should you want, if you wanna get something in place now. It would be what we've just described, it'll be typed to conform to that language. If then in two weeks or three weeks or whenever it's deemed not desirable. We can take another crack at it, so it really, do you want something in place now and, and vet it later? Or do you wanna wait and, and see what comes of it? It's your call, they both work.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to point out that, uh, alternate motions are frequent. And, uh, and they're approved, even though the language is sort of just voiced out. The city attorney writes it, the city clerk is taking minutes, it's going to be set in stone, as the city attorney just mentioned. It can come back in two weeks, three weeks, if the council desires to do that, but in the meantime, we have something in place. That I hope is passed.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, I'm gonna call for the question.
Wait, can, can I just make one final comment, just so I could, I could, there's clarity. Austin, I, this is absolute, my, my discussion and my, my concerns about the language of the ordinance as is. And the language of the proposed amendments and the, the, the desire for public, um, input has nothing to do with you. I think you would be an excellent mayor, but again, it's not, you know, I don't know that it's just incumbent upon us to decide. It all so abruptly, um, without fully understanding the language. I, again, is no reflection on, on, on my, my perception of you. And your ability to serve as mayor, I think you'd be, you know, really a wonderful leader of, of the city. My concern is that we understand the language, uh, what we're adopting, that the public knows what we're doing, nobody. I don't, I guarantee you, nobody understands exactly what is happening right now.
Okay, Mr. Olson, go ahead.
No, I think, uh, we all know exactly what the language is, the attorney repeated it, we've been talking about this since December when we selected the mayor. I tried to bring this back at an earlier date so that we have something set, so that the public knows exactly how that's gonna work. Uh, you had that pulled, and now we're back here again.
I had what pulled?
I had asked for it to go on the agenda to define the rotation from three to four, you were the one that asked staff to pull that.
I absolutely did not, do not say that, I absolutely did not.
That is true, that is true, anyway, we're here again today.
That is false.
We all know what it is, we don't wanna keep kicking this down the road, we want something on the books.
Can we call the question?
Start voting.
We have five yeses and zero noes, motion passes. All right. And of course, um, city manager, I do expect for us to still do public outreach and maybe a survey. It, it's not part of the ordinance that we just passed, but I would like to hear what the public has to say. That's, that's right, it's even cheaper than that if you have, you know, well, what the amount of people we're gonna send it to, you're right, I know, I used to teach college, so I know. Thank you. Um, if we can do that, just to get a feel for the public, and, and, you know, what we were saying before. Javier, are you still here? Hila? Um, just, you know, when we had the direct elected mayor in the past. A Hispanic person could never get elected because the, the money and the votes seemed to be coming from a particular group of people. Um, and I think that's the message he was trying to, to, to send, is that this way, every district is representation. In the past, if you notice, we had one, one mayor for what, twenty something years? And it looked like the, that, and then we had another mayor come in for, you know, money, money, money talks, folks, I'm not. If you're not aware of that, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to say that, it takes money to run an election. Oh, I agree with that too, because it was very difficult for me, he, he said, uh, you can't hear him, but what he said was, we need election reform. Cuz it, it costs money and it takes time, and if you're working full time or you're a single mom, let me tell you how hard it is to campaign. It's almost impossible, so yes, election reform would be great, but in the meantime. In order to have representation, where the mayor gets to rotate through each district, so each district gets to be fairly represented, at least for a year. By that council person, I think personally it is a really good idea. So it's not always on the east side or always on the west side or always in the center of the city. I'm just, if, if we look at cities that surround us and we, and we look at the people in power, is it regular folk or is it people with money? When you do a direct election? I mean, ask yourself those questions. And that's all I'm gonna say on that, all right. I beat that horse, didn't I? All right, but yes, having the public input would be great to hear.
So mayor, are you requesting a survey to be done on bringing back a directly elected mayor or some vi- some variance of the rotation?
I wanna know the public's, cuz I've heard. No, no, the direct elected, because I've heard from both sides of the public that they're finally glad that.
Directly elected.
All the districts will be represented, and then I've heard other people, loud and clear, that they wanna directly elect. Um, so I, I just kinda wanna see where the balance is on that.
Okay, so.
I, I think the, 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 s- doing a survey on, um. The preference for a directly elected mayor might put us all in a precarious position without the legal analysis. As to whether a directly elected mayor would put us in, in a legally.
Cause you know legal, yeah. Good point, so, so I'd recommend.
Position, so my suggestion on the survey was what we're doing now, the rotation, so that people understand. And people can give feedback on what they, those are the options on the table.
Well, I, I guess the, I guess I'll reach, redact or retract what I've asked you to do, instead of getting public surveys. Let's get some really solid legal opinions.
That was gonna be my suggestion, thank you.
Actually go back to a directed mayor, and then if they say yea or nay, or how it's gonna be done. Once we get a legal opinion to where it's not gonna cost us ten million dollars like it did in the past. Um, then we can bring it to the public and say, hey, by the way, um, the, the.
If, if I might just.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying that you don't, you're not a great legal opinion, I apologize if you think that.
No, 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 no.
There are some cities, and it, it came at, uh, a lot of litigation, um. That upon a CVRA challenge, ended up going to four districts with a directly elected mayor being the fifth. Notably coming to mind, I know there's others, but City of Rancho Cucamonga did that. I know Mr. Shankman was deep into that, uh, that case. And, and he and I have talked about it obliquely over the years. Uh, we would be looking at the judgment Palmdale has. Seeing exactly what it says and, and as importantly, what it doesn't say. And then give you, uh, both the, probably the bigger question is risk analysis. We can try anything, it's, uh, likelihood of success and cost to get there.
Right.
So we'll, we'll be looking at it that way, but.
So don't quote me on these numbers, but I think they said that there's like eighty-eight cities that, or maybe, maybe they're charter cities, I'm not sure, I, I don't know. There's about possibly eighty-eight cities and out of those eighty-eight, almost seventy of them have rotational mayors. And, and when I went to the contract cities and the legal city, cities meetings, I met many of the mayors that are rotation, have gone rotational. And they actually did it by the vote of the people to go rotational, and there's gotta be some reason to protect the city.
Cucamonga did it by election.
Newport Beach just did it.
They wanted to go to the directly elected.
Well, these, the people have voted to go rotational, and I, I wanna know.
That is the majority, and it's, it's very traditional. There are far more rotational, call them ceremonial, call it whatever you want, uh, mayors than directly elected. Directly elected mayors are. Perhaps a rarity is the word, or at least uncommon, uh, but not impossible, and certainly they're out there. And part of it is the, the perception of the mayor's role. Is it a strong mayor who's going to be active, or is it? The, the more ceremonial who runs the meetings and, and may cut a ribbon or two. But you're all one-fifth of the council, the mayor doesn't have any unique authority except running the meetings. So perceptions of what the community is expecting from their mayor can often have some influence. On what people expect or think or view as normal.
Right, I, I think there is some confusion about what the role of the mayor is, I agree with that. Um, they don't have a separate budget, they don't have, you know, separate authority, illegal authority, they have one vote, just.
Yeah. I would, may, may I?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, to the point about the cities that do it rotation, most of them are already built out. We have a lot of growth to do and we need a leader that's gonna get us there. I think that the report that comes back to us should also have suggestions on what that mayor's role be. Maybe we should have a strong mayor.
So mayor.
Yes, sir.
So long as what, what I already stated, uh, we have to take the legal realities of the judgment. And how we got to the five districts, that has to be taken into consideration. Because this was done in order to settle this matter and move forward, this is where we're at. I, you know, I, I, I believe that a directly elected mayor is probably a very good thing. But not if it runs afoul of, of decisions that we made in the past legally.
So city manager, we'll look into that, right?
I made the note for a legal analysis of rotation versus at-large mayor and strong versus ceremonial mayor.
Thank you, and.
Legal analysis?
Yes.
And no public input?
Well, we will do public input after we get the analysis, so the public is aware of the analysis, and then we'll do the public survey. Does that sound good to you guys? I just think that the public should know what the, what the law is before they vote on something, so. Okay, all right. So we're done with that one, moving on.
Okay, I guess the next one is mine too. This is the.
Wait, wait.
Mr. Curly?
Hang on.
Ten point one. Ten point one.
Presentation.
We're on new business, ten point one, sorry.
Oh, hello. Tim, council, my name is Patricia Morales, I'm here tonight to talk to you about something that I think would be nice and light and. Make us happy. At least my hope, right?
You come up with the news.
I wanna talk about celebration, so, um, I'm here to talk to you about, um, saves. And it, and the amazing, uh. Achievement of forty years in our community, so, um. I, I'm gonna give you a small, little historical presentation. For those of you that might not know, or for the people listening that might not know about saves. But I wanna start first by saying that, um, it, it's such an honor to be speaking on this particular program. For full transparency, I had the honor of working at. Uh, for full transparency, I had the honor of working at SAVES for the last twelve years and just recently moved where I'm still working with it, but not as directly as I was. So this is something I'm really passionate about, so. Um, in nineteen eighty-three, the city of Palmdale, um, looking at the needs in the community, realized that there was a big need, that needed, a, a need that had no one else to fill. And making what I believe was a very, very, uh, forward-thinking decision, they decided to create SAVES, South Anto Valley Emergency Service, to provide the services that were needed with, in particular, food insecurity and special services and special needs, uh, primarily, uh, unhoused services for the community. Um, the, the program came to be through the CDPG granting, so it's federal, federal granted. Um, it still is federally granted, SAVES to date. Um, that we apply, uh, the SAVES program applies on a yearly basis. Other, other organizations in the city, if they would like some CDPG funding, could also apply and have applied, I believe in the past. Um, because of CDPG funding, there's a lot of guidelines, and therefore is one of the reasons why SAVES has some very specific things that people need to meet in order to get services at SAVES. Um, but I think that what's important about the inception in nineteen eighty-three was the sentiment that it was created to alleviate a need. At the time, it was an emergency need, and so it's in the name, right? Um, but I think that the core value of that has resonated with this program for quite some time. Um, I'm gonna pass forward to two thousand twelve, and I'm, I'm very, uh, sentimental when I see this picture. One, I was there, but the little one I carry now is thirteen and giving me attitude, so. Um, but she has hair. One of the great things that happened on that year was that, up until that point, SAVES had been, um, in the city, funded through CDPG, but didn't have a city home, even though it was a city program. Um, it had been in different places. When I came to SAVES, we were in a, a storefront, little space. When I walked through the door of the now SAVES building, for me, it was like, wow! It was beautiful, it was, it, it looked great, and in comparison to where people were coming to before, it just gave a sense of, I'm not here for a handout, I'm here to get a service that I deserve as a resident of this community, right? So, to me, twenty-twelve was an incredible, uh, step in the history of SAVES. And not only was it, uh, a great, uh, like renaming, reopening of the program, but, um, I can tell you, because I was there, that on the first day that we were actually on service, um, we had fifty people. They just walked in because they saw people walking out with food, and they were like, what's going on here? The location was great, we were in a community that, um, in, in a place where it was fairly accessible and things, um, things really started happening for SAVES, I think. Um, I used to kid around when I first came here, because I would go around and say, you know, I'm the SAVES coordinator, and people are like, what's that? So for a long time, I thought, wow! It's been here since nineteen eighty-three, this is the best kept secret, right? Um, I, I would like to think that more people know about SAVES now, right? So fast forward, um.
Wait, go, go back.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I just wanna give a shout out to Palmdale's first mayor, Larry Chimboli, right down there in the bottom right. A huge advocate for, for Palmdale and the entire Anto Valley, my, probably my favorite Democrat. And, uh, and, and he was, he was directly elected, I think, originally, I mean, actually, I don't know that he was originally. Uh, he wasn't originally. He, but well, that's for another day. Eventually, he was directly elected, but originally, he was not, so.
So.
I actually have the Palmdale book on my desk, so. Alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, that's okay, that's okay. I did put him there for a reason.
We hear about the Chimboli Center, it's named after the first, uh, mayor, Larry Chimboli.
Yeah, great guy.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, fast forward, two thousand eighteen. One of the things that, uh, to me was also very meaningful was that, the sentiment that I talked to at the beginning, right, where SAVES was created with this idea of serving the community. Um, at the time, it was in this, in the time of need. A lot of things had happened from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand eighteen, right? Uh, we had gone through really tough economic, uh, economic situations. There was just a lot of things that had changed. And so with that change came changes to the kinds of services that we were providing, right? And SAVES had the flexibility and the ability to meet our residents where they're at. So in two thousand eighteen, after doing a little what you were talking earlier, you know, polling people and talking about what do you want, and we did something really crazy. I, I think I, I, I was afraid that my staff and volunteers were gonna go, ah, get me at after work, because we did something very, very, uh, different. We went from a traditional food bank where you get, you know, the box with, I used to call it the surprise box, cause you never really know what's in there, until you start taking it out, right? We went from that to client's choice. And client's choice is where our clients get to go and shop. And it was created into like a little shopping area in the back, and people were actually able to go in the back. Ooh, what's back there, right? So, um, but what it does more than anything is gives people, uh, you know, you get to pick what you want. I'm not a very big fan of can, uh, can a lot of things, but, uh, in particular spinach, right? But there, you know what you have in your covers, you know what your family will eat, you know what you prefer, and you get to choose. It is true, it is limited to what we have on hand, but that was the change, right? Um, at first, there was some people that thought it was maybe a little too wacky, but, uh, we, our clients received it very well, and, um, since nineteen, two thousand eighteen, that's how we had been doing, um, our food. We also, shortly after that, decided that we did our Christmas distribution in the same way. Prior to that, we would do, you know, if you have a, uh, me, I have a daughter and a son, uh, well, the, the daughter, we would decide gets a doll, the son gets a ball, and here you go, right? Um, so after we saw how well this worked with our food, we also transitioned to client choice Christmas. So our, and I think some of you guys were able to experience that last Christmas, um, and that has always gone really well. Again, it gives dignity to the process, and I think it's one of the things that I love about the flexibility and being able to meet people where they're at, right? Um, we continue to be, um, the, um, the only pantry in the Anto Valley that has, that is open four days out of the week. And at that time, we were opened, uh, from nine until four thirty. Uh, currently, that has changed, but we'll talk about that now. Um, next, um, twenty twenty happened, and everybody was affected. Um, SAVES, because again of that flexibility, the ability to be able to meet and change in the moment, right? Uh, I recall getting the call on Friday, there's a state of emergency, and we came back to work on Monday, and we did a food distribution on Monday, right? Um, and the reason was, uh, we were wanting to meet our, our, our community where it was. It was through the leadership of council at the time, city leadership, that reacted very quickly and decided we have a whole lot of people that just got hired for summer. And we can't open the summer programs that we have on hand, but we have SAVES, who at the time just, so you know, we had four staff, uh, who are gonna need a lot of help. So they redirected those resources, we were able to serve, and our numbers, as you might have remembered, some of you guys were actually in those lines, helping us, skyrocketed, right? Prior to say, prior to COVID, we were doing on a very busy month, probably two thousand, twenty-five hundred food orders a month. Um, during COVID, we were doing that in a week, right? Um, so, uh, the sentiment of SAVES continued to be alive in twenty twenty, uh, and we, again, met our community where they needed to be. Through twenty twenty and throughout the pandemic, one of the things that we did was we took chance, and we also realized that it was not just for our service area, the people were in need everywhere. So for that period, and in a small consultation with CDPG and all the other organs, uh, the other funding sources, we were able to take away the restriction that we weren't getting the paperwork that we traditionally get, we weren't getting the, um, the requirements of where they live that we traditionally follow. So during COVID and through the pandemic emergency, anybody who needed the help was going to get the help. Um, of course, all of this, it's not, um, done all by us. All of this requires partnership. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you the woman who is now at the helm of SAVES, uh, Ilma Meras, the SAVES coordinator.
Good evening to everyone. I don't have all the experience and all the years Ms. Morales have, I, I only have a few months, but I'm very excited to introduce you some of the faces, since we are the only food pantry in the city of Palmdale. The city of Palmdale is pretty big. And we can reach every single corner of our city, so that's why I'm very excited to introduce you some of the faces who represent the food pantry, who we work with. So if you hear your name, please stand up, so everybody can know your faces and recognize you. Uh, Per Blasom Square Church, we have fifteen years in partnership with them. San Vincent of Paul, Berta Alegría, uh, Salva Palmdale, Felix Menendez, Trinity Harvest, Louis Navarro, uh, De Yaren Little Rock, Jesucristo La Respuesta Blanca, Lighthouse Church, unfortunately, it's not here, pastor, LA Care Palmdale, Rosio Castellanos, Victory Outreach and Consumption of Fire Church. This is some of the food pantries we work with in, in forty years SAVES has been working with, so.
Can, can we give them a round of applause?
So as you see, we are not alone, we're working with the community, so I think so together we can make a difference. Thank you for all the supporting. So, uh, at the same time, I wanna, um, let you know, some of the vendors we work with it. Some of the donors are being working with the community, supporting the program that we run, SAVES, LA Food Bank, Trader Joe's, Albertson's, Food For Less, Targets, Target, Sam's Club, Walmart, Plaza Donuts, who, who do not like, like donuts, right? McDonald's, Little Sister Pizza, Pizza Hut, Jar House, Chipotle, Palmdale School District, and Palmdale Aerospace Academy. And we work with them in a daily basis. That mean, we pick up food every day. We don't stop. Maybe the food distribution stops only for days, but we pick up from Monday to Sunday, every day of the week. And even like that is not enough. Our, the need of the city and our community is big, and it's growing every day.
Tra- Trader Joe's is a huge contributor, right?
Yes.
Is that why they're towards the top? Because I see, I see the truck, I see their truck at Trader Joe's every day.
I, I think it's one of the first, the first donors, is what I understand. Like I said, I don't know the whole story, I've been reading on it, but I don't know all the stories. So, in the same time, we're working with other organizations. We are now only just providing food to the community, we provide services. Through other organization we're working in partnership to, like a Valley Oasis, Mental Health America, Salvation Army, Basta, Salva, Housing Rights Center, Bar's Altadona Clinic, and of course, LA Care. So, we have a lot of resources, we have a lot of community working together in the welding of the community, and I think so is why, that's why we are together, and we can continue to do that.
You can stay here with me. Um, of course, all of that work could be done, even now that we have a lot larger staff than ever before, without our volunteers, right? The volunteers are the heart of the community and have always been. Uh, just to give you a little perspective, when we first moved to that gray building, it was gray, we had a gray celebration, it was packed, there was all these people, we had a huge freezer, to me at the time, right? And then they left. And then I thought, how am I gonna do that? Because I used to, I used to do service in a room a lot smaller than this space. Everything was there, so I could go to the freezer, I could get your cans, and I can do the computer all at the same time. Now we had a whole building, right? So the community came and helped us. Uh, prior to COVID, we had about forty-five people, volunteers, that came to SAVES Monday through Saturday to provide services, some of them for forty hours. Uh, we have here today some of those people, and I'll point them out in just a few minutes. Uh, we also have organizations like the Latter Day Saints, uh, they're, they, we have a great relationship with them. They bring us their, um, their elders, their missionaries. They come and do missionary work at SAVES, they're there three days out of the four that we're open. Uh, we have Victory Outreach, uh, their homes come and do service there, and they cover two days out of the week. And Desert Haven is, uh, a program for, uh, adults who have disabilities. And they are there actually every single day that we're there, and they do an incredible work, right? Um, aside from that, we're also a job training program. So through SAVES, and it was from, before I came here, um, we have been working with the TSC program, the Transitional Subsidized Employment Program with DPSS. Those are for families who have minor children and who are needing to get some training so that they can go back into the workforce. They've been coming to SAVES and getting the soft skills and actual skills to be able to take back into the workforce, right? Uh, we also have work with the GROW program, which is the General Relief Opportunities for Work Program. That's for single young people, and it goes from eighteen to twenty-four. Um, so those two programs have been working with us hand in hand. Um, but then again, like I said, prior to COVID, we had about forty-five, we had to send home those that actually left. We had a few rogue volunteers that just didn't listen to me, and we needed them, so they stayed. They followed the rules and they stayed. Um, and so I have some of them here today. So if you're a SAVES volunteer, or if you have been a SAVES volunteer, would you please stand up? And if you indulge me for just a second, I'd like to just mention some of these people. Um, with the Bartis, please stand up. So this is the entire family, okay? So we were lucky enough to have Steve join us soon after. His wife came to see what's going on. And we loved her, so we didn't let her go. And there, a little bit after that, their son, Mestiano, came to join us. And so currently, the Bartis are there five days out of the week. So I just wanted to point that out. I have two, uh, another young man who I would like to have stand up, Mr. Carl. France. So, I just wanna let you know that Mr. Carl actually trained me, because when I came to work there, he was already there. So I think Carl hasn't really told me how long, but I estimate at least fifteen years of service at SAVES. So, thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. So now, celebration, right? We have been doing this work, and I think it's time for us, as a community, to celebrate. Not just because it's a gray milestone, but because really SAVES is of the community, and it's the community who's doing this. So, uh, when we thought about how do we best do this, right? Um, I wanted to make sure that we did something that was not just gonna be a one-time thing. Um, I wanted to make sure that we did something that was not just gonna be a one-time thing. But that could bring the community together for years to come, right? Uh, in a previous position, I had the experience of doing an Empty Bowls event. Empty Bowls is an international, uh, program, a grassroots movement that works around getting the community together and raises money for food insecurity programs. Uh, in Northern California where I worked with this, we would work with potterers in the community and the classes, the pottery classes, and they would get together, they would do their pottery. They would then donate it to the food bank and then that pottery was part of the gala, right? It was, it worked really well in Northern California. We had a great community with a large pottery community that was really engaged. Personally, I had never been able to take a pottery class. So I was like, even if I wanna participate, I won't be able to, because I don't know. And I wouldn't know how to start, right? So I always had dreamed of being able to be more open. And I'm going to try that here. So, uh, we've been working, uh, in partnership and we will start working in partnership with Asher Wish Pottery. Because now even I can do a bowl, right? Where you can go to Asher Wish Pottery and paint the bowl. Give a donation, you get to paint the bowl. The bowl gets donated to SAVES to be used in a little bit. I'll explain where. And, um, the money will go back to SAVES, right? And then the com- the community, anybody in the community can come in. We're already are making plans with some Girl Scout troops and different groups to come in and paint a bowl. And that will be part. And then you can be part of helping SAVES, right? Um, another part of that is we're also gonna have a Paint It Forward event. And that's, uh, a forty-five dollar donation. There's going to be two dates, September first and fifteenth. And you'll have a paint and sip. You'll be at SAVES and you'll be able to take a tour of SAVES and get to see all the things that we've been talking about, right? Um, that's, both of those, uh, will be, the tickets for both of those will be available at the placehouse uh, dot com, uh, website starting Friday, okay? But the bowls, the bowls become important because they're symbolize, right? The empty bowls symbolize what we're fighting against, right? Food insecurity. And so when you walk into the gala, which we will have, because after all this work, I wanna kinda, you know, have fun. Um, the, the gala will take pla- place September thirtieth. That's a Saturday, September thirtieth at Legacy Commons from six to eleven. Um, and the first thing you'll get to do if you purchase a, a ticket to be at the, at the gala is you get to choose a bowl of your liking. And that's your keepsake. That's what you take home, right? Uh, the event will be small this year, is the first year. And we'll hope to grow from here, right? You'll get to pick your bowl. We'll have a sit-down dinner. We'll have some reminiscing. We'll have some, uh, awards and silent auction. And hopefully have some fun and great memories. Um, that will be our inaugural, uh, ball and we hope to continue them moving forward. So that's Empty Bowls. Another thing we're doing to commemorate the fortieth year is we're going to be doing a communal mural. And I know I was here when I was really happy. We're gonna have a new SAVES, it's coming. Why in the world am I painting a mural, right? Um, this mural is not, it's gonna be a community mural. So it's gonna be done through community, uh, volunteers. We're going to do, for lack of better description, kinda like a paint by numbers. We're gonna work on a design that represents the community and saves and commemorate saves. And then we're gonna have an event where the community comes and they will paint this together, right? It will be at the SAVES building that we're currently at for as long as we're there. And then when we go, hopefully we have learned something new and we can do it in our new building, right? But this will also bring some, I think, much-needed, uh, color to our current SAVES building. And I think our community will feel good to come to SAVES and see something that the community put together for them, right? So, finally, uh, a year-round celebrations. There's different ways in which everybody in the community hopefully can join us to celebrate. Uh, you can paint a bowl for Empty Bowls. You can attend the gala. We're looking for sponsors for the gala. Uh, you can do a forty-for-forty in honors of our forty years of service. You can donate forty dollars a month. Or if you really want to have an incredible time, you can come, join Ida and all these great people. And really know what a reward it is to work at SAVES. Thank you.
So I don't know, Patricia, if you remember my father. He was a huge supporter of SAVES. And I know he's up there right now watching you and very proud of you. So I just wanna say that. Um, any comments from our council?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in. Um, thank you so much for everything you do for the community. It's, it, you've affected so many lives. I seen it firsthand, um, while volunteering, all the people that come through there, the system that you set into place where they get to go in and they get to pick what they want. Uh, I agree, it re- you know, it restores some dignity to the process and then it, it allows for people, um, it, 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 it cuts out the waste rather than giving somebody a mystery box where half the stuff in it, they probably wouldn't may, may, might not like. And they're gonna put it off to the side or throw in the trash. It reduces the waste. So the processes that you've put into place are, are very good and they work very well. Um, how's, how's the, do we have an ETA I, on the new building, on the bigger space?
We're going through some engineering, um, analysis as we speak and we should be able to provide you an update by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, cuz I know we're looking forward to getting you into a bigger spot, right? You need it?
Yes, like they said, you build it.
And, uh, how's the new, uh, CNG box truck working out still? Is that good? Okay, good. Um, is there anything else we could do better for you?
Um, I just wanna say that, um, I'm really thankful. You guys just recently gave SAVES a full-time staff that makes three full-time staff. I'm a little jealous, but I'm really happy. Uh, it's, it's much needed. So thank you very much for your support.
Mr. Lower, okay?
Well, Patricia, you know, I, it's amazing what you do. Uh, and every, everything has been said about the food and more will be said now. But one of the things that has been really thrilling is around Christmas. When you have collected all of these different games and toys and books and, and things for the children. Uh, I, I think it, it's an enormous impact for these kids to see. You know, they may not be seeing any other gift other than what, you know, because of your efforts, uh, is being provided to the community. So, yeah, it's fabulous, the food program. It's year-round. We know it's happening because we see it happening. Uh, and then at Christmas time, you know, we have the joy of, of gladdening the lives of these, of these children. So thank you and congratulations and congratulations to your staff.
Thank you. I, I can, if I may, just, you know, all those things are also the community. Because all the things that come out of SAVES were donated by a community. It was a great community donation that gave us all those books. And yeah, thank you.
Andrea?
I again wanna echo all of the previous comments from the members. Patricia, your leadership, your commitment and your passion to this service is commendable. Uh, to your entire team, what we owe a debt of gratitude to all of the community partners, to all of the volunteers. I mean, for an entire family to come in every day of the week. I mean, that's a remarkable testament to their commitment to service, but also to the type of work that is being done. I've shared this with you, uh, personally, uh, but not very many people know. When I was younger, I used to wait in line for bread, butter and cheese. I didn't know I was poor because I was very happy and I wanted for nothing. But as we had to navigate, uh, in terms of receiving services, part of the reason I didn't realize that I was poor was because people treated us with dignity. And your client's choice program does exactly that. And you're to be commended for implementing that program. It was innovative, sort of forward-thinking. Uh, but it's so critical in terms of your service provision because nobody wants to be in need. And nobody wants their children to know that they're in need. Uh, and you provide service, you provide smiles on faces at Christmas. And we were all there and we helped families navigate through the gift pantry. Um, uh, but everything you do, uh, is really transformative in changing the lives of those in the Antelope Valley. I just wanna thank you for all that you, your team, all the community partners and all the volunteers do. Thank you.
I, I just wanna say thank you to the, uh, volunteers. I get to see them almost every day. Uh, to the community partners, um, and Patricia, you're amazing. I don't know if people know this, but it's not just SAVES. She heads up our, uh, days of service, the graffiti removal. She's working on, uh, illegal dumping campaigns. You're just doing tremendous work for our community. And, uh, like Mr. Brophy earlier, also District Four, we're killing it. Thank you for everything you do. We, we all appreciate you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's give our hand. Oh, I guess I should do public comments. Sorry. Do we have any comment cards on this? What? Jason?
One with no name.
I'm assuming it's Jason.
I also wanna, I think the people at the SAVES and the volunteers also. Uh, my, uh, thing with this is I'd like to see maybe some, uh, signs along the road that says SAVES with the QR code so people know more about the program, especially, uh, in the unincorporated towns. Uh, maybe right in front of the, the church or wherever they're doing that. But, um, you know, we just get, spent, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars of city funds for the, for the tiny home community. But we could've got a grant from the county or the state or Measure J Care First and used four hundred thousand dollars to for SAVES. We could also ask Garcia Feinstein, uh, the other senator. And county, and, and county supervisors to write, draft a bill to increase SNAP benefits. So help people deal with inflation. They cut COVID funding. They should've, uh, said give a hundred billion dollars to Ukraine. How about more money to SNAP? Can you please draft a letter to ask our representatives for this? Uh, also, we, it's a food desert, Corson Park area. And this is what gets me upset with, uh, Austin Bishop. Why hasn't you tried to get a small grocery store in that shopping center and move the county out of the building into other spots in that shopping center and put an Aldi there? So people can go shop, so they don't have to walk a mile and a half down the road. All they have is a liquor store and a gas station and SAVES. But maybe they want some more dignity. Maybe they'd like a little grocery store, like an Aldi, which is cheap, affordable. And so Trader Joe, you can ask his brother, who owns Aldi, right? I'm just saying, you gotta do more for your districts. I might run against you, Austin, and this will be one of my main issues, is that you didn't improve the lives of Palmdale citizens in your district more.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comments on that item. Um, I would like to make a motion on ten point two to postpone that item. I guess postpone is not the proper word.
We can continue.
Continue item. Um, it, it needs some revisions. It had some typographical and, and grammatical issues.
Do you have a meeting in mind or bring it back at our?
What do you think, Andrea?
What I would, what I would like to suggest if we could is that we designate an ad hoc committee of maybe two members to work with the city manager to work through this fourteen-page document. It's pretty exhaustive. Um, but there are a lot of issues that I've identified with it. And I, I think to go through those now would just take hours on end.
It's like a month, maybe?
So maybe give us some time and we can designate, I don't know, two volunteers to go through it and.
Did you want volunteers from staff or from council?
Uh, council would be great, but just so that there's some consensus on some of the, cuz some of these are substantive rules that there probably needs to be some thought of, put into them.
Are, are we able to make that motion?
That, that's fine. Um, just by way of, of how this came to be. Um, this has been requested, uh, over time, much like the, the mayoral.
Let me, let me just say, I'll just interrupt you for just a minute. I do apologize for that. I know that's rude. Um, I don't want anybody on this council to think that this had anything to do with them. This was put in place at my request years and years ago. And it has taken this long. This is what I mean about the city moving slowly, um, to get something to move forward. Uh, so I just don't want anybody on, on the current council to think that this was initiated by anyone here. Uh, this is code of conduct for the council and for, you know, other committees and commissions. Um, and we've been working on this. Probably, I think, you're my third attorney on this. Maybe fourth? I don't know. It just takes a long time sometimes cuz when you get lawyers involved, the council involved. So we have, we have some revisions to make.
Again, this is the, the composite. It wasn't just lawyers and paralegals. Uh, the city has engaged a council management expert, specialist, uh, Mr. Ives. Um, he gave a lot of input on this. City executives have. So this is a composite of the, the work of at least half a dozen folks with expertise in this. And, uh,
I think, I think what happened was the wrong addition got to us. It's, it's mostly what happened.
Looks like it may well have, but, and, and that's fine. We certainly go through it subcommittee. But I, I want you to understand, this was not haphazard. This has a whole lot of long-term expertise behind it to bring this product forward. So, uh, my question, I was saying, um, there was a motion to continue this matter?
Yes.
And who, who made that motion?
I think I made that motion. I made.
Well, has there been a second to it?
Second. It's second now.
Motion's a second, okay. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem, you know, putting this over. But, you know, we should all be held to a standard of, of proper conduct, uh, here in the council, uh, in the community. Um, I think the prestige and reputation of the council requires that. And we don't really need a code for us to act appropriately. Um, and, uh, but I think that if we incorporate it into the code, then it'll be there with as much clarity as possible as to what a council member or any member of the commissions ought to do, uh, here and in the community.
Yeah, uh, I, I, I wish we didn't have to have rules and conduct. Um, but in the past, um, there were some things that needed to be addressed and there really was no way for a council to address them. And, you know, unfortunately, all of us have our inner child. And sometimes the only way to get people to raise up to the level of expectations of professionalism that we have as a city is to put it in writing so they can read it.
Exactly.
Um, and, and again, that, this has nothing to do with this council. This was three or four attorneys ago. This was brought up for a variety of reasons. Um, I, I believe that we have certain standards that as a council, we need to adhere to. It hasn't, y- you just assume that we come up here and take these seats and know how to act and know what to say and know how to behave. And that you, that will stay off the internet and not do a, a midnight type and bash our fellow council members and that type of thing. That's what was happening, uh, to me in the past. Um, we, we want, always wanna put our best foot forward and be as professional as an organization, as a council, as a city as we can. And the rules of conduct are a guide for us to, to, every, I mean, most businesses have a, a guide or a mission statement or something like that. That's, that's why this was initiated years ago. I don't even know how many councils ago that was, but, um.
So, uh, I just, if I could. The request for continuance, um, it has nothing to do with the establishment of a code of conduct in and of itself. Happy to implement a code of conduct. The, the continuance is a request. to ensure that all of the provisions that were contained in this, uh, fourteen-page document are legally compliant, but also to clean up the document. It needs refinement. Um, so it, it's really just a matter of cleaning up the document so that it's presentable in a way that should, that the council can adopt it.
Okay, so we have a.
And that's fine. I just do want to echo, or not echo state, they all, every provision in here is legally compliant. We can work on form. You can add things in. You can take them out. There's been requests for the authority to remove people from boards and that. But this is not presented with legal defects as far as the standards. I, I don't want anybody to think that would be brought forward.
Okay, I just want to then clarify for the record. Uh, section twelve C, disrupting legal meetings is not legally compliant with SB eleven, Senate Bill eleven hundred or Government Code fifty-four nine five seven point nine five. We could talk about it.
Well, we can as a charter city. We have flexibility, but we can talk about it.
Perhaps.
The point is, the point is, we, we should, we should do this offline. There are a variety of provisions like that and I, I just, we can clean it up and bring it back.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second on the table. Can we call for the vote?
Our voting.
Motion passes with five yeses and zero noes. We'll lean on to item number ten point three, letter of support, protect, I'm sorry. Oh, letter of support protecting U.S. manufacturing jobs, community investments and promoting innovative workforce and community partnerships.
Before you do that, uh, I will recuse myself from this matter.
Oh, okay.
Um, I will too, as an abundance of caution, uh, as advised by our city attorney, I've done work with the BYD company.
Okay.
Um, in the past, so just, uh, you know, just to be safe.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, a point of clarification, uh, city attorney? A point of clarification, I believe in the, I believe the rule is now um, that when you recuse yourself, you should state the reason for it.
That, that is absolutely correct. And, uh, I did not hear that from the mayor pro temp. You did not.
Should, should we ask her to come back in?
Uh, she should follow the Brown Act, but.
Okay, good. We're, we're just gonna wait for a minute for her to come back in. And Austin did state his reason. Austin stated his reason.
Yeah, he stated his reason. Is it hot in here?
It's hot.
Okay.
I thought maybe it was a heater behind you. I thought, wow, what the heck? What is that?
I don't know, but I was having hot flashes.
Welcome to my world.
We need clarity on my recusal?
Yeah.
I, I've been advised that there's clear, that we need clarity on my recusal. I'm recusing because there is a conflict of interest. I, I, I can, I can only assume, and I can't speak for her, but I'm, I'm assuming there's some relationship between her and BYD. I don't know. I can't. Okay, sir, please proceed. Thank you for waiting.
Of course. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, tonight for your consideration is a letter of opposition that was, uh, requested to us by Smart Local one oh five, um, to oppose H R thirty-nine thirty-five, which is also known as the FAA reauthorization bill. Uh, locally, what this, would happen is this bill would impact, uh, the ability for companies like BYD, a local, um, manufacturer of electric buses, uh, to be awarded any federally awarded or federally funded, uh, awarded contracts. So locally, the impact, it would hurt about six hundred and fifty, uh, local jobs here, good paying jobs. Um, and, uh, which is why the, the group asked for a letter of opposition from the city of, uh, Palmdale. Uh, a copy of the letter is in, was included, uh, in your agenda pack and it was also posted with the agenda. Um, staff is seeking direction from the council on whether to submit this letter of opposition.
So it was my understanding that this wouldn't just affect BYD, that this would actually affect some of our aerospace companies.
Potentially, it could.
And, and that's our lifeblood here, so.
Yes.
Um, I, I guess if you want to wait there while council has questions, do you have any questions for him?
No, I think I'm fine.
Mr. Olson, you're good? Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and open up ten point three for public comments on this item.
Jason Zink.
Basically, for the public to know, because BYD is owned by China and that's, that's the reason. Uh, I don't know why, you know, um, Mr. Buffett doesn't just buy and start a new company and make it an American company. But maybe that's an idea you guys can present. But the other thing is, uh, since we're doing letters of support and stuff like that, like I say, I want you guys to do that with SNAP. Ask the representatives on that, but I also want you to do it on, on high commuter because, uh, Juan can actually ask the state legislature to actually do a motion to, to ask Congress to, to do that. Uh, and the California state would back it and the county board of supervisors would back it. But the other thing is, I've asked for this for a long time, is a, 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 a high commuter area bill that would automatically create an, uh, opportunity zone that's recognized by the federal, state and LA county where they get benefits and investor incentives and everything to invest in areas that ha- have high commuter uh, concentrations like Antelope Valley and other parts of the, of the nation. We're probably the biggest one in the nation. And that's why I asked Rhonda to do a study on this, a small study. So we'd have some kind of documentation in order to make this bill and we could present this. This is the number one issue you guys should be pushing is a, uh, economic development for high commuter populations in the nation and in the state of California. Commuting is not green. It creates lasky kids, mental health problems, and it's stupid to waste money on gas and cars and five hours, up, up to five hours on the freeway. And we need to do something. And I, I'm asking you guys for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, and I know I'm not supposed to respond to you, but I'm gonna, because it just seems like everybody else is breaking the rules, right? So I just want you to know that we do take our commuters very, very seriously here. And one of the things that we have continuously fought is that tax per mile that they keep trying to stick to us because that affects us here in the Antelope Valley more than it does anywhere else. And so when things like that come up, we absolutely support our community and our commuters, and we're very aware of, of some of these, these problems. So just because we don't get up and say it at every meeting that this is what we're doing, I just want you to know that we, I personally take it very, very serious to have our commuters protected from, from money grabs, from people from other areas wanting to punish us because we have to work down in LA. So we, we are aware. I just wanted you to be aware of that too. I'm sorry, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, um, I, I, I'm still unclear who's asking for this letter of support. What, what nebulous organization is asking for that? I wa- I want to he- hear the full fa- facts of who's asking for this. And I agree with Jason Zink that a letter should be written about the impact of cutting our food stamps in half. You know, as I said, I lost ninety dollars. And under binomics, uh, the average American has lost seven hundred and ninety dollars in, in, uh, buying power ever since.
A month. That's a month.
A month. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, correct. And I also, um, believe that, that this council, I've mentioned it a long time before, gasoline already is already past five dollars. Why doesn't this council take a stand that we should eliminate the gas tax that only benefits the Democrats in Sacramento? You know, I think this council should take a stand in support of these commuters who have to go five hours, like you said, driving the freeway and why are they go, why are, why are we having to, to pay this extra tax on gas? Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have another speaker coming up? Come on up.
This is kind of twofold. Working for social services for over thirty years uh, allows me to observe and listen to the stories and the testimonials of uh, how people are at the end of their rope when it comes to food stamps. Um, and I'm not representing social services right now. I'm only representing the subject matter. For one person, you get two eighty-one. That's how it is. For two people, five sixteen. So why am I sharing that with you? Because as I've said in the past and past council meetings, there is a pattern happening in America. There's a pattern happening in California. There's a pattern happening in the Antelope Valley. And what is that pattern? Homeless. Don't listen to me. Listen to the data. Has, and, and people losing their homes has gone up dramatically and the light at the end of the tunnel is nowhere near. So you take ex, uh, mother and father who have had to rent for no fault of their own, whatever the reason, are now living on the streets. That story in itself is multiplying time and time again. And when they're out on the streets and, uh, they can't support themselves any longer, guess what? Those food stamps of five sixteen and whatever other people in the household no longer are enough. So I believe that both issues are important, but the bigger root, one of the root causes is how people are losing their homes because the rate of their rent continues to go up. And when I bring this up to this council, it's like silence. Because a lot of us are here that are the perpetrators of that raising of that rent on that family that lives in this Antelope Valley. I'm not saying no to capitalism because that's what America's built on. But I'm also saying is, let's draw some measures. Let this body and council come up with something to protect uh, people who rent and no longer can because they continue raising it on them.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comments on this item. Um, can we just get some clarification from either the city manager or the city attorney as to who originally requested this letter of support? I'm, I'm sorry. I missed it.
No five. I, I, unfortunately, I don't know the acronym for SMART, but it's a manufacturing, uh, group, uh, union, uh, the BYD.
But was it just BYD?
They're the ones that specifically asked for the city of, like, uh, Palmdale for their.
Watch that, mister.
I caught myself.
Okay.
Uh, the city of Palmdale, uh, for the letter.
Okay. I hope that answers the question that was asked. Okay. No more comments from the, uh?
Well, yeah, um, you know, this is, this is a difficult issue really because, um, there are grave concerns about what the Communist Party of China does uh, with its people and the aggressive nature of, of China in the world. Its aggressiveness, uh, its aggressiveness towards Taiwan, its moves in the, uh, Pacific Ocean. And so there's a grave concern about that. But here on a local level, what we're talking about is six hundred workers that would be directly affected by this legislation. And, um, I guess on a practical point, we, uh, as a council should concern ourselves with the impact that this would have on our, on our local residents. Um, many of those employees are at BYD. And BYD is manufacturing transportation that we use here locally to give transport to, uh, anybody that needs it, but primarily it benefits persons of, uh, limited, limited means with a bus system. And we have the first completely electrified bus system in the nation for which, uh, Antelope Valley Transit Authority has received recognition. And, um, just in the last few days, uh, Mr. Garbay, there has been a chapter eleven filing by another manufacturer of, of buses, which may in some fashion impact the, uh, ability, uh, to produce these buses that are so essential to mass transit. And, uh, so, you know, I'm torn about it, but, you know, I think looking at it from the point of view here locally, uh, I think we should support it. Thank you.
I, I, I agree with you. And yes, that, that bus company that, uh, the federal government had been touting um, did go bankrupt or claimed bankruptcy, um, because their buses kept catching fire. And, uh, our local buses don't. So clearly we have a better product, right? And for me, every job we save is important. I, I don't, I don't care if it's one job or a hundred jobs or six hundred jobs. I want to keep the jobs we have and I don't want the federal government getting in the middle of it. So I, I would like to have support from my council on us providing this letter of support. So I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a second and a motion. Can we call for the vote? Or did you want to speak? I'm sorry. That's okay. Okay.
It's hard enough to get this up here.
Yes. Get it while you can. I'll give you a chance to speak after. I, I know it's kind of irrelevant, but I know you probably have some thoughts. I do apologize.
Um, no, I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Lowe's concerns. Also the concern that the president signed an executive order last week uh, limiting investment into Chinese-owned companies. I think as, uh, China's aggression advances, we're gonna see more and more of those orders. Uh, the National Defense Authorization, Authorization Act also has provisions that deal with, uh, foreign companies and I think that this is a sensitive topic that's gonna continue to evolve. But in the short term, right now, I'm confident with, um, the direction that the manufacturer's going. They're changing their ownership structure just a little bit. I'd like to see them change it fully, but, uh, one day at a time, I guess.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Okay.
So where's Mr. Bishop in? Over here?
So we, we, that item passed and we can bring back, uh, Mr. Bishop and, and Andrea. Thank you. He was hiding in the room. Okay, now we are moving on to item number eleven, non-agendized public comments. Now is the time for the public participating, participate. Let me try this again. Let me just untie my tongue. Now is the time for the public participation on items not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is allocated two minutes, um, total on items not listed on the agenda. Do we have speaker cards?
We do, ma'am. Jason Zink.
I just, uh, I want to talk about Rhonda Perez for a second. I don't think she is, her best is not good enough to be city manager for Palmdale. I mean, when it comes to grant leveraging, she failed. When it comes to doing agenda, we didn't have any information on this public comment for, uh, public, uh, where was it? Uh, participation from Community Programs Division. Not even a little paragraph to say what they're gonna talk about. It's her lack of respect and common courtesy for the public must be addressed. It's constantly, uh, just like the, the tiny village. There should have been a, a better presentation on that. Even staff messed up. They didn't even mark the area of the vacant land where it was gonna be. Uh, Dr. Mock, I've talked him down to, uh, he wants to, he wants to sue you guys because he thinks he got a raw, raw deal and that, uh, Megan, uh, lied to the planning commission on his property, his project. And it's, we have it on video, so it's proof. Uh, we could also do advisory measures on the ballot. I don't know why we allow elections to go by and not do advisory measures. So we get in, input from the voters. My two aunts, homeless, and I blame Mike Miller for them being homeless because the rent kept on going higher and higher and higher in the senior apartments the city helped build. My aunt got, uh, assaulted where she was because of, she was homeless. And my other aunt just got a propane tank stolen off her trailer. So they should, they should have lived their golden years over here at that senior apartment complex. But Mike Millard wasn't there, and that's why I have a problem with him. He failed. Uh, also, we can also pay Shankman not to sue us. How about that? But I do believe it's legal to have, uh, a mayor elected.
Thank you.
David Harris.
Thank you. David Harris.
Interesting enough, uh a lot of things came together, don't start that time yet, but a lot of things came together tonight. Community block development grants, uh both federal, county, city. Uh started saves, right? I mean, we started a program how many years ago that is delivered on grants? Um I would hope that this council doesn't get fearful of grants, uh they're very important to our community. Uh they're very important to the work that uh five oh one C threes do and believe it or not, if you're a triple A member, you're a member of a nonprofit organization. Um also, uh getting back to partnerships, I I gotta thank Waste Management for all the work that they do with a lot of our nonprofits. Throughout the whole Antelope Valley, so actually, thank you for that. Um also, uh I gotta thank Rhonda Perez and Mike Miller and Chuck Boswick. Uh who does uh send out community information on community block grants, other grants that are available. In fact, the group that you just awarded a large grant to, I was at their facility yesterday touring to look at it. And uh it's gonna be pretty remarkable once it's completed. Uh my guess is it'd go along a lot, a lot longer than ten years. In fact, uh Community Development Center USA is looking to partner with some of other nonprofits along with the city of Palmdale. Uh for grants and Jason, I do get your emails, I'm not supposed to talk to him, mayor. Um but uh we we are working on it, so I appreciate Jason's emails uh going out there. Also, I want to give a shout out to Carrie Smith and Parks and Recreation. For allowing us to operate our day camp operation out of Dominic Masari Park, it was flawless. Uh we had no issues at all, none reported to me anyway. Uh so Carrie, thank you for that and and to her team. Um New Colors Project, a year ago, you attended the Gala Mayor, uh and our gala is this Saturday. Uh last year, we, oh, see, I need to thank Patricia Morales for her presentation because she did receive the award. Last year and I gotta mention that I might be going off to Maui to take a look at designation, all the devastation representing the Red Cross there. Here in the Antelope Valley, um so uh we need to to keep those folks in our thoughts as well. Part of the reason for going to that is so that we can. Uh take a look at the devastation and then apply that to what is being built. Uh here locally for us in case we have a major disaster, so um sorry I took longer.
Thank you very much for the information.
Bertha de Allegria.
I just wanna take this opportunity, I didn't want to miss this chance. Uh Patricia left already, but um I'm part of the Society of Saint Vincent de Paul. And we are hosted by Saint Saint Mary's Catholic Church. Our organization, we serve needy individuals or families regardless of religion, sex, orientation. Besides the food pantry, we provide rental assistance, assistance with utility bills, with funeral expenses. And with COVID, uh our conference has been in existence for over a hundred years. And we're not very well-known, we're, you know, a small organization, but uh. With COVID, we lost our funding from the parish. We couldn't do our yard sales anymore to raise money and SAVES came to the rescue. Prior to that. Uh and I just wanna say this is a thank you to the council because you guys provide funding for SAVES also. And SAVES helps us. And I just want you to realize how many families are helped. So prior to COVID, we used to help families once a week with bread. We get donations from bonds. And then once a month, they would get a bag of food, basic staples, rice, beans, you know, pastas, very small. Uh and we used to help about four thousand eight hundred families a year. Okay? But after, you know, during COVID, we partnered with SAVES. And as of now, we have two days at Saint Mary's on Mondays and Fridays. And I would say about eighty percent are non-Catholics because we serve anybody. And they come and stand in line, we still to drive through because we are able to use the hall to serve families. They stay out there in the heat, in the cold, people come walking, people come from Little Rock. But we're we're now serving seventy, seventy-nine hundred families because we do three distributions including in Little Rock. So thank you.
Don't, don't leave yet. She wants to make a statement and then I want to ask you a question.
Just very quickly, I just want to say thank you for all the work that you did. You came up to praise Patricia and SAVES, but I want to praise you for the work you do. Last winter, you and I were out in the rain, in the dirt, delivering food and blankets. And you went out the following day to go back and give somebody a tent who was sleeping on an open mattress in the rain. You do amazing work. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
And can you just let the public know? Where you're located in case they need some services from you?
Uh it's Saint Mary's Catholic Church, it's sixteen hundred East Avenue R four.
Sixteen hundred East Avenue R four.
Um and my name is listed under parish bulletin, Bertha de Allegria.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for all you do. Any other speakers?
Not at this time.
Oh wait, there's more. Come on up, you come on up.
In a couple of months, uh we're gonna come around on the agenda, the um rotation of the mayor. I believe the survey that they will put out will have no bearing on um. The position of mayor. Uh it it is what it is because of a legal issue that came about. It's gonna stay the same, it's gonna be the five districts. So really, the question is, how are we going to move through this ceremonial? Mayor's position, ceremonial, it carries no more weight than any other position here. So, I would like for you, in your free time, to get a little piece of paper out and a pencil. And I want you to write down one, two, three, four, five. And underneath, I want you to ro- write the pro tem. That will go with that, you know, each one. And you will see the one through five. But if you do the one, two, skip a three, four, five. Write those numbers down and put the pro tems underneath each one. You've got a screw up in the middle with that. Not having three, who's gonna be the pro tem, it's it's gonna be a mess and you're gonna be going, driving us crazy. Out here, going over and over the same thing when it has no bearing on anything, has no bearing on anything. So you need to be thinking about it, you got a couple of months, think about it and start with four, five, six, you know, four, five, one, two, three, four. Just draw a piece of paper, do the numbers and save us all a lot of heartache.
Thank you, Marsha. I was just trying not to be greedy. You drew the ball, it's your fault. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, um last, last meeting, the acting sheriff, get act, acting captain gave a presentation about the sheriff's department. And I want to say, I think you've got your fools mixed up. You know, the sheriff's department is now. Uh get get getting paid for a routine patrol with a lieutenant. Driving the car, he's getting his pay, plus they're getting paid for the overtime they do. And then the presentation showed that ninety-five percent of the sheriff duties are not. Uh of of a major crime, only five percent are are murder, homicide, et et cetera. So in other words, they're charging us a a triple amount of money. Cause they said they're down with personnel. They said, well, we need fifty new sheriffs for the Palmdale Station. But I went down to the Palmdale, Palmdale Station and like Jason Zink said, you know, there's no ad advertisement saying. Rec- we need recruitment. If the sheriff's department really needed people, there would be billboards all over the city. Join the sheriff's department, none of that. You know why? Because sheriffs enjoy earning three hundred thousand to. Half a million dollars in overtime. But I tell you what, what they do do is when the Teamsters are picketing over here in technology. The sheriff's department send four or five cars to harass the Teamsters. There's no public involved, but they go there, I was there and I witnessed them harassing the union of the of the Teamsters. Why? Because they're they're black and brown employees. And like the the acting deputies, acting sheriff said. We we are invested in the community. Yes, they're invested, they're invested in protecting Amazon. In they they dictate the the procedures there and they let scabs come in. They're acting as a muscle, as a thugs for Amazon. And we have to be careful because yesterday some LA County Sheriff Deputy had to be shot down like a dog. Because he was on a golf course running around with two guns and the the tourist police had to shoot, Montana police had to shoot him down. So even within their own ranks, they're psychotics that work there. And I I really think that the sheriffs are double deity, this is bigger than the T-Pot Dome. That they're double deity and also taxpayers are having to pay for them.
Next speaker?
Turn this into a little positive testimony and a story that just ended moments ago. Um I reached out to Ms. Perez a few days ago on an issue of children who have been molested. Domestic violence and just issues that they've gone through their entire lives. So I got a call from a person who wants to help them. I immediately reached out to my colleague here and I know you're doing the best you can to to figure it out.
But I share that with you and and the request was this, uh the park here, the water park, right? And I know it's only open on weekends, there's about eighty kids that just need some sort of uh uh reward, if you will, through. From what they've experienced time and time again. That's the request on the table and I hope you guys can get involved in somehow, some way. Uh helping them out to go for one weekend and have a good time. So this person calls me in during this meeting and uh but earlier in the day as I was working. He calls me and tells me, he says, listen, I got this teenager, he's sixteen years old. And uh by the way, he doesn't know I'm saying this, but I think we need to know that. And he's been on drugs and and he's, he's, he's talking about taking his own life and I know. You prioritize uh that, Mrs. Benton Court, mental health. So he's talking about taking his life and uh. And please don't direct me to two one one, they'll take forever. Uh please don't direct me to other areas because they say it's eighteen and over for adults, only this is a. Alright, let me see what I can, so I'm multitasking, I'm doing my work. And he's on the phone and we're trying to get on the phone and we're we're spending almost a couple of hours just trying to get immediate urgent help. And uh so he just texts me after trying the whole day and he told me that, listen, I was able to get him to Santa Clarita. And uh they took him in, there's a place out there and then so he's, it's a success story. But I share that with you because the challenges that we faced just to get immediate help. On uh somebody who was experiencing, thinking about taking their own lives as a teenager in the Antelope Valley. All the red flags and the red checkmarks that it took just to help this particular person. This was a positive story, but it could have easily gone astray and because of the rhetoric and the policies that are. Because of age and 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 times, uh we weren't able to get help right here, we had to go outside. So just wanted to share that with you guys.
No, I appreciate the information and I know I'm not supposed to respond, you'll just have to yell at me later. But I I don't know if you were at the um the the co-council meeting that we had where we had the people from the the care court come up and speak. And I specifically addressed the nightmare of the maze that mental health people have to go through. In order to get services, treatment, or even get a, you know, get seen by anybody within a twenty-four hour period. When you're in an emergency situation with mental health, you can't wait two weeks to see someone. And that's why I asked them specifically to have team members in the North County that can at least help people, people maneuver through the system. And get them to the right place and not have to wait a month because we don't know what's gonna happen to that person from the time of the incident. Until the time they can get an appointment. So I I wholeheartedly understand what you're saying. Um I I as the mayor and we as the council are very sensitive to that. Um at the sheriff's department, I read every single suicide report and attempted suicide report. It can consists of all ages, all wealth indexes. Every type of person has has issues that need to be addressed. And if we can get the care court to bring personnel up here. To address the maze that they've created to get mental health, I think it will help everyone overall. So I appreciate you coming up and speaking and I just want you to know that we we are trying our best to address it.
Thank you for listening.
Just one last thing, if there is anybody in crisis listening to this or if there is anybody who knows somebody who's in crisis. Nine eight eight is a twenty-four hour suicide prevention lifeline for anybody in need. They will pick up and they speak various languages, I know. But it's it's a resource, right? So if somebody in the middle of the night can't reach you, Marcos, there's a twenty-four hour service. Or they can call and get, speak to somebody who is trained professionally in suicide prevention. So nine eight eight. I don't know, you can save it in your phones, spread the word. It's a twenty-four hour lifeline for those who are. In um in crisis and considering suicide.
So, nine eight eight.
There you go.
That was another call, right? And and there, you're right, they're excellent. However, time, time, time kept going by. And it's a general hotline, they're not from here. So they're in a centralized location when you answer. So I can only imagine, they're 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 on there looking at, okay, where did you say you live at?
Right.
Santa Clarita, Santa Clara? No, 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 Santa Clarita, this is where the person is at right now. So it took, and time kept ticking. Now, we're talking about immediate urgent care, someone who was about to take their life and this person was trying to prevent it. So at that point in time, immediate time, nine eight eight didn't come through. So, and 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 it's there, I believe for long-term, permanent help, but immediate urgent uh. And and I will close with this. Teenagers in the Antelope Valley have the highest suicide rate in our school systems. So I say that to you because that was the importance and the and the urgency of trying to get immediate help, so.
Well, just just so you know, I'm gonna really make the guys in the back upset. But if you can't get through, you know, nine eight eight, you can call nine one one.
Yeah.
And we have what what we call a a met team, we have uh mental uh evaluation teams to come in and lend assistance. And they're specifically trained for that. Um so I I hope no one is ever afraid to call and and ask for help when they need it because. That's why we're paying for the service of the sheriff's department, not just to control crime and to stop criminals. But to to really reach out to people when they have serious needs like mental health issues.
It's gonna take a village.
It does take a village. We need to work together on that and we are absolutely trying. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Lowe, go ahead. May, is your microphone on, sir?
It was, sorry about that, thank you. Uh when we had the discussion regarding fentanyl poisoning, um I thought that the sheriff was going to be informing. Uh you of any fentanyl deaths or uh fentanyl uh situations and. The distribution of the antidote to that. Uh are we getting that? Because um. There was a fourteen-year-old girl that died about two weeks ago from fentanyl poisoning. Were you aware of that? Were you told?
Uh I was not told at the time that it happened and oftentimes they will not report that to us until it, there is a finding. Postmortem finding that it was actually caused by fentanyl.
There was uh one about, uh, there was one about uh twelve to sixteen months ago. Uh a young man in Little Rock. There's been many others. I'm just wondering if uh we're getting those reports. So that we can try and understand the breadth of the problem. We know it's significant, but how significant is it? And I think that if the sheriff gives us the statistics, um we'll be able to deal better with it with that knowledge. So please, I urge you to uh make sure that we're getting the information. And yeah, it takes a long time for the autopsy to come back.
We are absolutely at the mercy of the coroner's office, just so you know.
I know.
I will work with Rhonda and our captain on that to to see that if there is data available, accurate data, that they provide the data to us. Um a lot of, there's a lot of crossover, like where a person lived versus where a person dies, where the body is recovered. Um what kind of tests are gonna be run? There's a lot of things involved, so let let me get back to you on that.
Okay.
And and I'll see.
In both of these cases, these children died in their home.
And I, if I could just make a distinction, there is a distinction in someone who commits suicide, takes their own life. And someone who dies accidentally by um ingesting, inhaling uh fentanyl. So I I don't want there to be any confusion on the two issues. We were just talking about suicide prevention, yes, they're both equally important. Of course, we want to preserve and save everybody's life, but I want to make sure that we're not confusing a mental health issue with. Um you know, exposure to illicit illegal drugs.
Okay.
Sometimes they go hand in hand. Sometimes they go hand in hand.
Mr. Wilson, any comments?
If we had a criminal justice committee, we could be getting reports when appropriate.
Thank you for your comments. Alright, moving right along. I think that's the end of our public comments. Any, any, oh, I'm sorry, one last one, I apologize.
Abrasive type, but not really. So I'm a blue collar American and I work hard for my money. And I don't like working overtime. You know why? Because currently I'm taxed at about thirty-five percent of my income and when I work double time or even overtime, the government likes to take about fifty percent of my double time, so. As far as the police officers, I respect them for the difficulties of their duties. Unless I was lied to, but I I I swear I've seen in a history book in high school where we used to, and I'm not pointing at anybody here, I'm not saying that anybody of you guys are bad or anything, but when we didn't like our elected officials and what they were up to, we would drag them in the street and tar and feather them. I'm serious.
That's true, that's what Luke said.
There was worse repercussions too to some political figures, but um, like I said, I'm not blaming any of you. But with as far as the council rules and regulations, if somebody's acting out of line for city council, the worst punishment is censure, which is an expression of strong disapproval or harsh criticism, an official rebuke as by legislation of one of its members. So realistically, we're playing like a slap-on-the-wrist game, you know?
I think you're saying you've been bad.
I mean, you know, we're we're all adults here and we know that when we violate laws, those gentlemen in the back can handcuff me, take me, you know, I've seen some stuff in my time, but um, I'm a little disappointed with that because there's really no repercussions with your guys' behavior and even in that same regulations, it does state that, you know, if members of the community are acting out and you guys cannot conduct your business, that we will be escorted out. And I'm not too sure if it said that we won't be allowed to come back indefinitely, but at least for the remainder of the meeting, so. I think uh, the punishments could be more stricter as far as that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing done, I'll go ahead and close public comments on this item. We are now moving to item number twelve for city council announcement and requests. I know that Eric, you had some, so I'll let you go first.
I thi- I think we got them out of the way as the meeting progressed. Yeah, they already came out. Criminal Justice Committee and the mayor.
Alright. Any anybody else? City council announcements and requests?
Okay. Um, I just want to say, I want two, two positive announcements. Both Councilmember Bishop and I are members of the Antelope Valley uh, Air Quality Management District Board. And in our most recent meeting, we did a lot of positive work. We got a lot of um, positive funding approval for projects in Palmdale. One specific, uh, specifically uh, to my district is um, funding for twelve electric vehicle stations at McAdams Park. We're very excited about that. There are also, we also approved uh, funding for uh, electric vehicle charging stations at the auto mall. Uh, there were a couple of other items that were Palmdale-related, but we're doing some good work uh, when it comes to uh, air quality management. Thank you to uh, Councilmember Bishop. We're moving, we're moving that agenda forward. I just want to share that. So those two projects are coming soon to our community and I just wanted to let everybody know that that's happening. One other thing, I I announced a a a little program that I'm running, um, MPT for the Day. Uh, if anybody wants to submit an application, if you're in junior high or high school, all it requires is an email uh, with a paragraph or two about why you want to uh, learn about uh, local government. Just send me an email at MPTfortheday@gmail.com and um, we will select as many people as I can accommodate to maybe participate in one of the council meetings and sit alongside me at some of the meetings and some of the events that we go to. Uh, so if there, if you guys know of any high school students or junior high school students who'd like to 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 participate in that, uh, please have them send an email to MPTfor, the number four, theday@gmail.com. That's it. Thanks.
To to dovetail on that, I've seen other communities, they have a youth council. And they do like mock meetings and stuff like that. Okay, good. Yeah.
So that's the first I've heard of that. So um, I am concerned about the legalities of um, allowing people exposure to sensitive information, so I just hope we're careful. If they're, if they're gonna, you know, sit up on the council and hang out with you for the day and go through documents and.
We'll, we'll, we'll let it go through the process, but I've seen other, other communities that you've heard of. I think we talked about it before.
Well, we've been working on one here, correct?
Yeah.
For a long time.
We're, I think we're, we've spoken, I think since the day we were sworn in, I spoke about a future leaders program. We're gonna have, you know, youth come in and do a mock city council meeting and that kind of thing.
I think, I think we've actually done that a couple of times. Um, is is Terry here? There's Terry. She helped me coordinate, um, because Girl Scouts will get their badge, their government badge, by participating in certain events. So we did like a a mock council meeting and they got to come up and set up all the du- the dais and and try to go through a script and hold a a meeting so they can get some exposure doing that and they got their badges. And I have Terry to thank for that and I think we have another one probably coming up that maybe you're gonna be working with Marilyn on. So we do, uh, if you guys have a Girl Scout troop, Boy Scout troop and you need to get your government badge, reach out to us and let us know and we'll see what we can make happen.
And don't forget the Partners Academy.
Not for kids, though.
No, not for kids, but yeah, we have that too.
Yeah. We have a lot of different things for the community. Just reach out if you have some questions. Alright, moving on to number thirteen. You are now, right?
Well, you know, I think we learned tonight that when government's involved, things take a long time. And I gotta say, it's just as frustrating for us as it is for everyone else.
That's why I said we don't want to delay trying to figure out the process because.
And for staff. I mean, it's out of staff's control. There's processes and things that we have to be fully in compliance with. That's just the nature of what it is. So it's not anybody's fault. Just be patient.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, so item number thirteen, city managers' report.
Mayor and council, we celebrated the uh, Tequila Taco Festival this past weekend with approximately nine thousand attendees. That was very well attended and very well received. We have a family movie night this Friday and also wrapping up our summer concert series on Saturday with Gary Allen. As uh, as Mr. Bishop or Councilmember Bishop alluded to, Palmdale Partners Academy is kicking off on September fifth um, and will run through October twenty-fourth. So make sure to get your applications in on that. You can visit our website if you're interested. We did install a new flashing beacon at Summerwind Elementary Crosswalk that has gotten a lot of good public feedback. Um, it increased the safety in that area with pickup and drop-off as well as school uh, getting in session and out of session.
Rhonda, did the, did the school participate in any payment on that?
Not to my knowledge. They did not. Uh, and uh, I do want to just correct a couple of things. We did send a letter of support to advocate for additional SNAP benefits in April for SB six hundred, so that what did happen and did occur. Uh, we also held several outreach meetings surrounding our unhoused population. Uh, we had four of them back in March, April and May. And uh, we do also provide small business grants to several local businesses here in Palmdale and we continue to do that and we continue to fund it every year. So I wanted to clarify those and also um, celebrate our city's birthday on the twenty-fourth. It's our sixty-first birthday and uh.
That's a, that's a date that I don't forget because I'm exactly one day older than the city. So on the twenty-third is my birthday and I too will be unfortunately sixty-one years old. But I'm very happy to have made it to sixty-one years old, so. There's a a good and bad mix there.
That was my last question.
One last thing that you did mention and as you were going through it, um, we, I had the opportunity to attend the nonprofit organization training boot camp.
Thank you.
Which was amazing. There were fifty um, available slots for the first round of the nonprofit uh, training boot camp and every single seat was taken.
Okay.
And we had a variety of folks that do re-entry work, that do um, unhoused work, that do uh, youth work. Women, the women's club was there. I mean, we had such a wide variety of nonprofits represented there. It was a beautiful display of our community um, service and passion uh, for helping one another. We've got three more to, from what I understand, three more sessions of that, so if there are others that want to participate, I I believe that they can still, is, can they still apply or?
I believe it's full, but we will make accommodations where possible. They can speak to Luis tonight or go on our website.
Yeah, so I spoke to a couple of people in the community. They were like, oh, I wish I could have gone to that because it's really a sort of a A to Z on how to run, how to start a nonprofit, how to run a nonprofit, how to apply for grants, how to write grants. Um, it's really a tremendous opportunity for those um, who have a desire for community service. So I would encourage those who who are interested to reach out to, who did they reach out to?
Our Economic Development Department or on our website.
Okay. And the cost is?
Ten dollars.
That's a good price.
It's simply a cost of materials.
Yes, okay.
And I think we give them lunch.
Yes.
You can hardly get lunch for ten dollars anymore, so what a deal. Okay. Alright, moving on next to item number fourteen, presentation by city attorney.
Uh, we have the walked-on item that uh, council approved earlier, the DeAngelo matter. After that, you have a personnel matter. They are properly agendized and you can recu- recuse, recess to uh, closed session at your convenience.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn to closed session and you're welcome to stay and wait until we're done and see us report out.
No reportable actions occurred.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was gonna do. So, we're gonna be adjourning the meeting tonight in honor, respect, and prayer for the city of Maui and Lahaina. I don't know if that's a city. Is Maui a city? It's an island.
Maui is the island, Lahaina is the city. My grandfather was more than
Oh, really? All right, so yeah, you know, they had a devastating fire there, wiped out the entire city. If people have the opportunity to go to a local charity or Red Cross to make donations for that community, that'd be very helpful. So I hope that you will keep all those people in your prayers. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting until September 6, 2023 at 5:00 p.m. right here at City Hall.